Break them. All right. Ready? It's two o'clock, not ten o'clock. It's two o'clock Tuesday, September ninth. I'm going to call the town council work session to order. We're going to start out with the CIP budget and five year projection discussion.
So council, just if I could just have a minute. So the order of this discussion will be as it appears in your memo. We'll do budget assumptions. Dave will talk a bit about cash flow and then Shannon will move into her CIP. And Tracy has set up a version of the cash flow where up on the screen in sort of real time. As you make CIP decisions, she can update that cash flow document. So you'll see the impact of those decisions. It may be slightly in a slightly different order than what you have in the packet. So I apologize if you, you know, have to move around with a few of those things. You will see on the cash flow, and I can reiterate this later, we're in good position this year and next year. And then as we start to project out, we see our cash flow position. And that is in part because we have a lot of projects that you will all be considering whether or not you want to move forward with. Where, when, and you know, when in the calendar you want to do those if they stay in the next five years, or if you want to push them out further. But we've put everything in there so that you have the opportunity to set your priorities and decide which projects you want to do. As we look out in that five year, we have been very conservative, as Dave will point out with our assumptions. And, you know, we don't really know where things are going right now. So it makes sense for us. We felt it made sense for us to be conservative with those assumptions. But it is those two things, very conservative assumptions, along with putting every project essentially into the, what you're seeing today. So that you can make those decisions, makes that cash cash position look poor going out. Understanding you all will not do every project that's on the list, right? And so that cash position will improve as we go through this exercise as well as the budget. Exercise that we will do or budget presentation that we will do on October fourteenth. So just kind of wanted to lay that groundwork for you all as you're thinking about the conversations that we're having today. And I will turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we're gonna, as we did last year, we modeled out five years to try to get a barometer where we're tracking. From a cash perspective, and we're going to start off just with 2025. And in your packet, you have a projection assumptions that we're using for this year, both for revenue, personnel, expense. And it's similar to what we've done in the prior years, focusing on revenue at first. For this year, we've taken sales tax down 5% from 24. You see the trending we have in our sales tax reporting. So we went with 5% from 24 actuals. Open space, we were had a flip side increase of sales tax from a budget correction, which has helped offset a little bit of the sales tax reduction. On RET, we're still running really, really strong. You'll hear an update in a couple of weeks for the prior month. But we are taking up our projection for the year to 7.5 million versus a budget of 6 million. So that's helping offset as well any sales tax reductions. Accommodation tax is flat to the budget, which we had projected a downward trend when we did the 2025 budget. Which is about 10% down from the 24 actuals. So even though we're 10% down, we're okay to the budget for accommodation tax. Marijuana is still running down, so we're keeping it down about seventeen and a half percent from 2024. Property taxes are based on evaluation for the accessories office. Workforce housing, we had some ins and outs for the number. Some of it was related to sales tax as well. Others was a runway grant deferral to 2026. On the docking permit fee, last year, we talked about adding in this as a new project for the town, which is ongoing. We had projected in the budget, we would have 375,000 of fees related to that. We've taken those out for 2025. So there's no fees for the docking permit fee for 2025. Other minor changes that are going in through REC and other funds, nothing really material with that. And we do have, of course, the utility fund with the water, 10% water increase that did come through. But those were all under no change category. On investments, we are running over about about a million dollars for the year from our investment income perspective. And we think that will be safe to put in. That's just due to the delayed reductions of interest rates that a year ago were anticipated to start earlier. And but that they haven't really happened yet. So we're getting the returns on that. And then the 1.18 million river co-op agreement that we received earlier this year in the utility fund. So when you roll all that up, actually to the 2025 budget, we're running ahead with our projection, which is good.
We're running what? I'm sorry?
Ahead in revenue. You see that in Tracy's report. But, you know, it's just under 2 million ahead in revenue with all of these ins and outs that we've had for our projection for the year. Personnel, we really haven't made any changes other than the year to date of really, I'll call it vacancy. We're letting that flow through and then, but we have budget. We have the budgeted headcount for the remainder of 2025 in the projection. We will not be fully staffed for the entire year. So we'll probably still have some upside on the personnel's, on the personnel line. On expenses, really, on the change side, we have our repayment of a dollar grand of 916,000 built in. That could be delayed a little bit, but we have it in the projections for now. And then runway compared to the budget. We're favorable two and a half million, and that's really timing more, more costs coming out in the future, future years. And then updated, we updated our capital from updated pro formas for utility golf facilities and garage. And then our special projects, we added about 540 grand. That was spark and other grants that we did that were approved earlier in the year. Those, that will be a future budget appropriation before year end on that fund for those. That's probably, probably the only one we'll probably be doing. So that's 2025. And when you look at how we're tracking on expense for 25 versus the budget, we're well over 14 million favorable. Most of that's capital and it's capital that we're going to talk about with Shannon, projects that have just been delayed. But they're not necessarily not happening. So that's generally what happens. It's more timing than anything else. As we jump into 26, and you'll see this again in about a month. But on revenue side, as Shannon said, we are really taking a conservative view of revenue for 26. And so we're accommodation tax, we're leaving it flat from our projection for 25. Sales tax, we're taking it down 3%, which is about one and a half million dollars. So we're going to keep a downward trend on the sales tax side of things. RET, we're going to take that back to 6 million. We've had upside this year. Hopefully we'll have it continue to happen in 26, but we're going to put in the budget $6 million. Keeping property tax flat. We just got our valuation back, so we'll kind of look at that, but it didn't look like it changed very much. Nicotine tax, we're expecting that to be 25% down from the 25 projection. So we've taken that out. The STR regulatory fees, pretty much 1.7% is a reduction we're anticipating. That's just natural loss of licenses, which is about what we're running right now. So we're just projecting, we're going to keep that going forward. Marijuana is continuing to decrease every year. So we're keeping a 15.5% down from the 2025 projection. At some point it'll level, level out, but that has not happened yet. We are reintroducing e-delivery back into 26 revenue of about 175,000 for 26. That's the docking fee revenue. It's about 11.4% of the expense we have built in. We're taking a conservative view on our investment income for 26. I mean, we do anticipate rates will come down, and so we just projected that as well as depending on what's approved from a budget perspective of expense. Whether it's operating or capital, we will have less cash to invest. So we took it down about 2 million based on that. Parking, we left it flat. We did keep in the gondola free for summer season in 26. So that's about $200,000 of revenue impact to the town on that. Live ticket tax is just based on CPI. Golf fund increasing green fees 5% next year, which you'll see that in the proposal when we go through fees in the budget presentation. We have a couple of grants in for buses in the garage fund. And then on utility, we're going to get some upside with BGB on plan investment fees next year. Even though the water rents are going to increase 10% in 26, we built 7%. We're going through the meter conversion right now, and we just tried to hedge it back a little bit. So that's why it was 7% versus 10 coming into 2026. On the personnel side, we're keeping merit. We've been averaging around four and a half percent. We're keeping that there. The only new staffing change is an attorney starting in April for the town. And so that's, everything else is flat from a staffing perspective. And we are increasing the healthcare benefit costs. I think we bumped it up about 500 grand. In 26, based upon our consultant review of what's happening. And then on expenses, other expenses, it's really based upon. You know, inflationary, if there's or what the, what the fund reviews had for expenses, really trying to keep things as flat as we could. And, you know, the only, so it's been, I'll say nominal expense growth, 2% probably overall, just to keep that in line. And then the only change really on restrictions is we are anticipating five loans a year for the employee down payment assistance program. So we're anticipating that to grow about 500,000. Each loan's about 100 grand. So we'll continue to have that going forward. Okay, so now we get into 27 through 30. And as Shannon mentioned, we are keeping things flat. Last year, we increased taxes 1%. This year, we're just going to keep them flat from the 26 budget. You know, if we go down, we said sales tax going down 3% is about one and a half million. Accommodation tax going down 10% is about 1 million. We didn't really build that in every year, but that kind of gives you an idea. If we have that fluctuation, we kept it flat. Nicotine tax and property taxes, we're keeping flat as well, just to be conservative. We talked about the accommodation regulatory fee. We're going to keep that reduction of 1.7% a year, each year. E-delivery is going to grow. We've got 175 for 26. We're going to increase that to 600 grand by 2030. Based upon our interest rate for investment income, we're going to leave that flat, go in in the out years. It will fluctuate depending on what, how much cash we do have to invest, but from a rate perspective, we're keeping it flat. Parking's flat. Live tickets will have CPI. Water, we're keeping it growing 10%. Even beyond, I think it expires in 27, we built in 10% continuing beyond that in this model. Marijuana and golf, we're keeping flat. We do have bus grants coming in, continuing two more grants in 27, two more in 28. And three more grants in 2029 for buses. So those expenses for the buses are in here as well as the revenue for those grants. And then open space is going to receive a couple of million bucks for BGB. And we've got that built into 2028. And then the big change here is really utility fund. We're building in a $30 million loan. And so we're going to take on debt in 28. That's our plan right now, based upon anticipated spending. And we built in 4% interest. And that's for Gary Roberts Water Treatment Plant. So last year, we didn't have the entire 50 million in our capital plan. This year we do. And so we're going to have to go seek funding for that. So our utility fund can absorb 30 million more in debt based upon this projection. Which will allow us not to break any covenants of prior utility fund debt on the other water treatment plans. So you'll see a bump in revenue in 28. That's what that's about. On expenses on operating, we've got the merit increasing every year, no new headcount. And we've increased healthcare 5% annually. And that's really about it from an expense perspective, I want to highlight. We do have a footnote here with workforce housing, depending on how things land, we keep track of how much money we're putting in. As a town to workforce housing outside of the revenues that come into that fund. And, you know, it'll grow to 46.7 million by 2030, depending on what projects get approved or not approved over the next five years. All that being said, we're going to jump into the roll up of this, which is the cash flow. So you can put it up now on the screen. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Can you say that part about the Gary Roberts Water Plant? Cause I've heard two different numbers. So did you say that we're taking a $30 million loan or that we can?
We, we have, we've modeled 30 million to be borrowed by the utility fund. We think that's the most that we can borrow for the fund. The project's 50 million.
20 million we can handle.
Today.
10% in this is per year.
Yeah, the 20 million we can handle. And if. That would come from the town. So that would be coming from our excise fund to fund that 20 million.
Yep.
Because there's not enough revenue coming through to offset all of that cost. So that's what's built in to this. So when you roll it all up, I don't need my glasses.
Are there any questions before we go into that? All right. Thanks, Dave.
So when you roll everything up here, this is our Bible, if you will. And we've got our 25 projections, everything I just went through, that's the roll up for 25. So 139.6 million in revenue. And spending about 4 million more than that, which is 143 million roughly. And as we talked about last year, we have other cash items outside of what flows through the funds. Whether it's our EDAP loans, whether it's debt payments on principal or capital leases. So we've got additional cash out in 2025 of 3.6 million and a little bit of cash in from loan repayments. So we net the year at 7.6 million, just to kind of give you a level set. We sat here a year ago when we said we would be about 21 million negative cash. So we are favorable. A lot of that is being pushed out into future years. But we're in a favorable position right now in cash. When you go up to 26 and go up to the top there, we're about 134 million in revenue. With what Shannon said is all the CIP projects are in for 26. So we didn't really take anything out. So with everything in, we're going to be in a deficit of 16.7 million in 26. Then we get into other cash out items. We talked about EDAP growing 500,000 a year. So there's another 500,000 happening there from a loan perspective. We have our debt payments as well. And then the big change here is there's a housing purchase I've added of $12 million. And so that's something that I'll just put it out there. But, you know, I know there's been discussions about a potential purchase of a housing project. So that, that's what the 12 million is in 2026. When you go down into cash in, you see in 2027 and 28, housing sales coming back in as cash to the town. Of 4.2 million a year. The delta of that would be coming through the buy down program as expense. So that's, so we are reflecting. So you kind of look at the net of those two, which is roughly. 4 million, 3.6 million, whatever the number is somewhere around there. That would kind of be the net impact of that project, but that's how we've broken it out here. So if we go back up, Tracy. So in 2026, right now, we're coming out of cash $32 million. Okay, that's what, that's what this rolls up to be. When we look at 27, same thing with the assumptions we went through on revenue, we're 131. And we jump up about 30 million bucks in 28. That's that loan coming in. And then we go back down in 29 and 2030. And, you know, we have fluctuations of our net number, really based upon our CIP timing of projects. Our operating expenses are relatively, you know, growing conservatively. So it's just the timing that you'll see at the bottom of this of all of our CIP projects, which will impact, you know, the, the loss that we would have from a cash perspective. And so when you go down to, oh, Tracy, go up one second. If you look at the debt repayment on the 30 million. So we, we have built into here that if we do a loan for 30 million, we're going to have to start paying principal on that loan. And so that's what that represents. We have the interest. We have the interest built into the income statement for the utility fund. So that's up at a top. But that's, that's a new line there on that one. So if you go down to. I will say the beginning cash balance for 2025. We started the year at 177, which would have been end of 25, beginning of 26. And we're projecting the year to be around 170, 175, and then it flows every year, right? And so at the end of the day, we are eating into our cash position 32 million in 2026. So we're going to end up at 142 as a row 52 cash balance. 2027, we're eating into cash 29 million. So we'll be down to 113. Then we go down to 108, then 83, and then 76. That is with everything in, just as we did last year. As, as you look at our goal, our KPI goal, we came up with last year is 135 million. So as Shannon said, when you look at 25, we're doing great, really strong position on cash. Even with all of the projects in the current CIP for 26, we're doing good. We're, we're down to our, but we're still 7 million positive to our KPI goal. And then we start to get into deficits. And so our goal today is to really. Below here, if you keep going down, Tracy, you're going to see all of the projects that are in Shannon's email or memo packet. For recreation, public works, and this, this goes down to sustainability, parking and transportation. Childcare, utility, and then housing. Those are all the detailed projects we have listed out. And then we also have just line items, not the detail for the rollover for 2025. And there is detail for rec history, garage, golf and facilities, just so you see what we're spending and other capital items. But we just kind of left those as a, just a lump sum number. The biggest one being garage, but those are the buses we talked about, we'll be buying, and there's grant revenue to offset that. So that's kind of a big picture of the goal for today is to really go through these. The asterisks that we have, if you want to go up, Tracy. The asterisks that we have here on these various projects are what we would say recommended we keep in. Based upon the feedback of Shannon and other, other departments. And so that's why we kind of put an asterisk around those, mainly infrastructure projects, I would say. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shannon, if you have any questions. No, it's fine. So when Tracy makes changes to this model, the bottom will change. If, and if we take a project out, it'll reflect in this model and we'll kind of see how we're, how we're looking. Based upon projects that get deferred or whatever the decisions are. So anyway, that being said, I'm going to, are there any questions so far?
We start going through this, what should be, what would be your instructions to council? Like what are we, what are the goals? We don't, I don't think we have enough expenses in CIP to actually make that KPI where, where.
We do.
We do. Okay. But.
Can I just clarify? You do, but not necessarily with the stuff that's normally Shannon's.
Yeah.
You guys did a great job last year of going through, you know, Shannon's CIP and really prioritizing projects and doing all of that. So there's not a lot of money to be found in Shannon's. You're, you know, a lot of that is, there is some for sure. There's, you know, I don't know, six, eight, 10 million dollars depending. But housing is going to be probably the biggest thing for your buck. So I don't want you to go through Shannon's CIP and think, I've got to find $50 million because you're going to have a really hard time doing that.
And we have runway phase two in here. Everything's in. And that's for, for example. And I, I would just say, we'll kind of see based upon what decisions are made, where things land. You know, we were conservative on revenue. As we always are conservative on expense when we, when we go through and actually have our expenses. We didn't build anything in this model for upside and expenses, right? You asked me a couple of years ago, well, what's our, what's our cush, if you will? And so some of that is really depending on how things shake out, how things, revenue might shake out. We just wanted to kind of leave things basically at a baseline for right now.
So I think to Jay's question, I guess what all of us are kind of wondering is that. How much do we actually, like, if we do decide to put off runway phase two, because that's such a large amount of money? How much do we still need to cut?
And it's in here. So we will, as we go through this, we'll see where we land. And I would say, you know, there's what 16 million right there for runway phase two through 2030. So, you know, we, we can, we didn't want to take projects out. Because this is really what the feedback was coming in based upon what the, with all, every project. And so we just felt that we would put everything in here and kind of let y'all kind of, we did this actually a year ago. Not much outside of the infrastructure related things stayed, quite frankly, when we did this a year ago. A lot of stuff was pushed out. Now it's back in. And we have, I'll just pick on fiber for a minute. Well, last year we pushed fiber out. Now it's in. We put the pro forma for fiber in here. So you can kind of see what's going on with fiber. But, you know, those are things that we might end up pushing out again, but we just wanted to give you that visibility.
Okay.
I'll add is you don't, you don't have to make every year from now to 2030. I'll add is, you don't, you don't have to make every year from now to twenty-thirty balanced. As you're gonna, each year it's gonna change, you're gonna, you know, potentially be rolling over cost savings, your budget, you know, financial position is going to change. So if you have, you know, if twenty-thirty is below the hundred and thirty-five million KPI, that's not, it's okay, you don't have to solve that problem today.
I would agree with that. I mean, this is just, this is a guide as you see what's out there. So you kind of see our landscape on the next five years, kind of what we're looking at. A lot can change in that timeframe.
You know what, as much as you can today, you know, trying to have your crystal ball and plan out what your, you think your priorities might be. And we already know you guys set some priorities for us. Those may change today as you look at the budget, they may change on the fourteenth as you look at that budget. And that's all fine. It's really about setting yourself, yourselves, the town up going forward with a good base from which to make decisions. And it helps us as staff, you know, it's it's hard, say, for Shannon or for housing to to stop on a dime or start on a dime. And so having a good idea, if you really think you want a project to go forward in twenty-six or twenty-seven, that's good for us to know. You know, it doesn't mean that if you push something to twenty-thirty, we can't pick it up sooner if we have to. So please don't feel like you are making decisions for the next five years that are set in stone and you cannot change them. That is absolutely not the case. This is, it is an exercise with the budget to make sure we're putting ourselves in a really good position going forward.
And you know, we restrict three years of the CIP on our restrictions. But even with everything in, our excise fund, which is where we put that restriction, is okay. So, you know, so we're not seeing any fund balance issues, which you don't, we're not going through that today, we'll go through it in a month. But we're not, we don't have any red flags around that right now.
Okay, now the fun part. You guys will navigate to table one, it's the first attachment after the memo. It's the five-year CIP table. And we're gonna keep this on, so as we make adjustments, Tracy can do that live and we can see how it's impacting our overall flow cash. So on the table this year, I added in that future years column. Prior to last year, we used to put future projects out in year five. But to balance for five years and the cash flow for finance, we added in the future years column last year. So I carried that to this table this year. This table is a draft, so we're gonna make changes, corrections, and I can add any additional clarifications as we finalize this for the budget next month. I'm gonna go line by line, and I'm gonna call down other project managers if we get into specific questions.
I think maybe Dave mentioned it, the asterix piece, do you just want to speak to that again?
Definitely. So on the left of the table, I have asterix on projects that we're recommending to keep in the budget, they're time sensitive infrastructure projects that staff highly recommends that we keep. So the first section are the recreation projects. These two projects, staff's really looking for guidance from council if we want to pursue them. The first is the Kingdom Park Ball Field Pavilion, which we designed last year but elected not to go to construction. We put it in in two thousand and twenty-seven just for discussion purposes, but I'm really looking for feedback if this is a project we want to schedule or push it out and wait and see on it. I think you guys are familiar with it, it's between the ball fields, it's the restaurants, it's the ADA, it's the shade, it's it's that project. I did bump the budget up about fifteen percent from what our recommended budget was for two thousand and twenty-five construction.
And Shannon told me it doesn't matter if the money is coming from the open space fund or if it's coming from the general fund, doesn't matter, is that?
We're just from a cash flow perspective, the money is in the bank.
All the same. At a goal, as we say.
I'd, I'd like to make a pitch to keep that right where it is. I mean, I'd love to move it up, but I don't think I would get support at this table. So, but I, I, you know, we invested in the turf, you guys have heard this before, I'll make it brief. But we invested in the turf, we're seeing huge success with many, many varied user groups using those fields. And to to put a Band-Aid on it for two years and spend money to make it safe. I just, I I hate to to spend that kind of money when we really need to finish the project. This is our community, this is recreation, this is what's near and dear to our community. So I I I make as strong a pitch as I can to to keep that right where it is.
Yeah, I'd agree with your sentiments there, Dick, and I'd say I'd support moving it up if that was possible. And it'd be interesting to look as much use as that gets. And I spent a lot of time doing PT over there all summer. And I mean, it's just booked from like three, and I'm getting calls that, you know, bugging John Door to get the lights on at nine-thirty because folks are using it. I'd love to see, you know, from a design perspective, are there other ideas that staff has to, you know, do you throw even a little bit more at it to make it really just a phenomenal, like do it once? And, you know, does enclosing it make sense to help take the load off of Carter Park? Like, how do you really make that, it just used so much, and how do you make that even better? And so I think it's a valuable investment in our community and, yeah, support the dollar amounts, would like to maybe see a little more.
To a certain extent, I agree with Todd in the fact that I am curious of what that looks like if we were to expand and make it more of a focal point. Where I guess I disagree is that the the timing is precarious. And so I would, I would recommend putting it into twenty-eight or twenty-nine at four million, where it gives us a little chance to see where sales tax, where finances take us and the need and seeing those fields used for a couple more years and see what the need of the community is and whether a community center belongs there or or whatever, or maybe it's, maybe it is just a shade structure. But kind of giving some time for these fields to play out, I don't think we are, from my understanding, we're not endangering our children by being there, bathrooms work. And so the the risk versus reward of giving a little bit more time to play out, I think, is a prudent way to move forward.
I'm fine with where it is, I think it's definitely a project we want to move forward with. And from a perspective, I think what you have is great, thank you.
I agree with everybody that this is an important project, which is a locals project. It's, it's our local people using this facility. It was a great step forward to get the fields completed, and that's the use part of it. And this is sort of the icing on the cake, and it would be nice to do it sooner. But I have Jay's concerns about our economy and just the big picture at this point in time. I would leave it where it is and cross my fingers that next year we can fund it and we can push it if we need to another year, if things are really uncertain. But I don't think we want to cram it into this year, I think we want to keep it where it is.
Rica? I agree with Steve. Okay. I agree with two thousand and twenty-seven. I do agree with something that Todd said that I think is really important is that over this next year, that we really make sure it's the right structure for the location. And I'd love to see ultimately it closed in or something like that. So if we can build it so that in the future we could put walls on it, I don't know if that's even, but the other thing about the use is, I think it's only covering the very flat part, it's gonna be really difficult for people to see. So maybe a concept where there might be some of the stair down covered. Or I just, I do want to support this project and hope that staff can have the best layout for that.
One thing maybe to ponder as we're looking at it, right? Like I hear about the rec center and kind of like, it's kind of hemmed in and there's not much room to expand there. I wonder if down the road, there's an opportunity, if rec's got needs that, you know, whether it's for after-school programming or is there, is there a way to really better use that land and whatever gets built there to, you know, just be used? Yeah, multipurpose, what does that look like from rec's perspective?
Perfect, thanks for the feedback on that, I'll keep it in two thousand and twenty-seven and we will do some additional design work with the council in twenty-six to make sure we're comfortable with the structure. Great. Okay. Next one is realignment of the rec path near the rec center. Think this came on our radar, I mean, it's been on staff's radar, but from the council directive, when we were looking at childcare expansion off of the back of the rec center and looking at that congestion and that alignment of the rec path, staff took a stab at maybe looking at that for construction in two thousand and twenty-nine. It would need a new bridge, so it is a bit of a pricey project. So I'm looking for feedback on that, if that is something we want to pursue and keep in the five-year CIP.
Yes.
Keep it where it is.
Yeah, or if not sooner.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine is the same to me, and I think it doesn't really affect your cash flow that.
Okay, great.
Well, twenty-nine, we don't have in our reserve, so it's actually a big difference.
You have twenty-nine in your reserve, you don't have twenty-thirty or future in your reserve.
Ah, gotcha. So you don't get to count the current year for three years.
Understanding. If you don't want any reserves, that's where we put it to future year, so it stays on staff's radar, but we don't reserve the cash for it.
No, I say we leave it where it is.
Perfect. We'll get working on that. Okay, next one is Blue River Monitoring Maintenance, that is just a requirement for our Army Corps permit, no action needed there. The next one, I should retitle that McCain Open Space Construction. This is a placeholder for dollars to implement the plan that's going to come from Duke's project. I think five fifty honestly could be low, depending on the level of improvements we want to make out there. We can keep it as is till we make decisions, we can up it, or we can shift it, council's choice.
Okay with this?
Sure. I think, you know, we've seen THK's presentations, I think it's very thoughtful and something that we're are behind, are, you know, really behind, so I would recommend keeping it where it is.
I agree, and I think we're gonna talk about it at a later time tonight, Dave. But it's also something that I think maybe lends itself to phasing if we got worried about it or adding money in to make it better or different in any way. So kind of the way we're looking at Blue River, the Blue River pathways, you could do this in steps if you had to.
Okay.
Great. Okay, Public Works Projects, Airport Road Improvements, you can see the asterix there. We do eventually need to do this project, we've been pushing it and pushing it, waiting to see how Block eleven planning shakes out. And I think I'm ready to start design and hopefully go to construction in this in two thousand and twenty-eight. I'll be bringing road sections and sidewalk ideas and bike ideas and crosswalks to the council. And sort of doing maybe even some collaborative outreach to the neighborhoods there to see what we want that road section to look like. It is funded, I think fifty percent from the housing fund as well.
Shannon? It, is there enough time for you to do it in two thousand and twenty-seven?
No.
Okay.
Waiting. It is, and I I want to be thoughtful and take the time to do the design. If we knew today what we were gonna build it, we could get it done, but I think we want to.
Yeah, well, that's why I questioned it on a.
Questions on that one?
Everyone okay with that timing?
The next one is a placeholder budget, it's rather large. And we will have information, we're going through engineering evaluation for that embankment repair adjacent to the professional building in the Blue River. We got some geotechnical investigation done, and the engineer is gonna come back with some recommendations for us. And I'll update on the council how that budget looks, but I recommend holding that seven fifty in the event that we need to do a substantial repair.
Is that seven fifty purely for just shoring it up and making it solid? Is there any kind of interesting river engagement stuff there? None?
I'm hoping that covers shoring it up. Maybe we'll get lucky and the engineers will say it's great, and then we could relocate that seven fifty elsewhere.
Not hold my breath.
Count on that. Thank you.
I'm hoping I don't come back for more, okay?
Yeah.
Carter Park Improvements is just the next phase of the dog park work that's underway. Last year, we split it between drainage and park improvements for visibility that there is a lot of infrastructure work happening out there. The next one is the much talked about Fairview Roundabout Pedestrian Beacons. This would be to implement push button flashing lights at the Fairview Roundabout. This is half the cost from the design and contract that we pursued last year. And staff wanted to bring it to council to see if there is still support to fund fifty percent of that project through our CIP.
How solid is the other half?
I have not heard that we have a funding partner yet. CDOT is unwilling, unable to participate, and I have not heard differently from the county at this time.
I think it's really important that Town of Breck steps up though and leads this and says we're willing to do half if somebody else will come to the table, it's just such a key intersection. And those are, that is our workforce. Those are folks getting on transit, I think it's a really important project.
There's no more place in town that people don't complain about, I don't think.
Here with Kelly Moore.
Are we willing to do a hundred percent of it? Is, I think one of the things that we have to contemplate, because if we don't get a partner in this, do we just keep kicking that down the road until we do, or do we just cross that bridge?
I don't wanna say that now, in public.
We say it. It's gone.
And as I think everybody knows, we don't own that intersection. We have some property on a corner that is ours, the rest of it, you know, is really in the county and CDOT jurisdiction. So I think coming up with half is a really generous move on the part of the town. And we as staff will continue to push for our partners to help us out there.
Yeah, I think that's really important to the point of getting this done is that I think even though we don't own it, if we could just try to lead the process, that'd be great.
And we are actively looking for grants as well.
Right.
Okay, next is fiber, I'll invite Kristen to the table in case you have any specific questions.
And you have in your deck a pro forma on the on the fiber carrying it out to twenty-thirty.
Well, they're switching seats, I'll just, we'll maybe show you something a little bit different for the budget on the fourteenth. It is, you know, fiber is, there's a lot going on with that as far as we just got a new agreement. We have a higher revenue share, things are trending in the right direction. We have a strategic plan, which Kristen has been using to determine where we do construction and drops and things going forward. I know there are some questions about how we decide and what we're deciding. So Kristen can answer those. The other important part of what was laid out in the memo for the years going forward is, you know, we're, we can be very specific about two thousand and twenty-six, and then it gets more broad as we go down. And we would not be doing construction in the future in areas where we don't know we're gonna get new customers. So I want to just to point that out, and Kristen will go into more detail. The other thing that's important to know in the pro forma document that was in your packet, have capital in the expense line. And so you see as you look out, you know, we get to, I think our deficit is like a half a million dollars in two thousand and twenty-nine or twenty-thirty. That includes the capital investment. And one of the things that we are, you know, staff has been really striving for is from an operational perspective, to be flat or making money. So what we'd like to show you for the fourteenth is, we'll keep capital, but we're gonna separate it out so that you can see operationally how we're trending towards that, you know, sort of positive cash flow. So that was all I wanted to point out.
Yeah.
Kristen.
Thanks, Jen.
And then, cause it's, I, that was exactly going to be my comment, you know? That was always our hope from the beginning and when are we going to get there? So that would be great.
Yep.
Um, I, as hard as it is, because I want to keep investing in this, I think we need to cut this in half. So cut each year in half and save some in the end. Keep it moving forward. Keep the investment going, but do half as much as what we're seeing here would be my suggestion.
Okay. Um, so one thing I wanted to point out in twenty twenty six is that we already have some customers that are signed up waiting. So um, the Village at Breck, Main Street Station, um, the Runway Housing, we're going to put fiber in there. The BGV Employee Housing. So um, those are things I'm looking for. It's places where we can have customers set up and build to those customers that want the service instead of building it and they will come. It's like they're there, then we'll build it for them. So twenty twenty six is pretty important to get to those customers that already want the fiber service. Um, but then future years, you know, we don't have as many people signed up in the future years, so definitely open to suggestions there. Um, on the pro forma, I did include the IRU lease we have with the new agreement with ALO. It included um, a lease with Verizon for dark fiber. So you'll see some bumps in twenty twenty six and twenty, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Those are payments on that dark fiber lease. And then we've projected a twenty percent increase in customers each year out. And so you'll see um, in twenty twenty nine, we do become positive if you don't look at the capital improvement um, budget. So uh, yeah, just, just hoping to get to a net positive there in the future years. Kristen, could we get a twenty percent increase in um, hookups based off of our current backbone instead of like, um, I really appreciate what you just said about um, twenty twenty six, but in twenty twenty seven, it looks like we're once again expanding into new areas. And I'm just wondering if we've passed enough homes at this point or um, multiple dwelling units that you could get that uptake. I think it's possible to get the twenty percent increase each year if we don't continue with some capital investment. Um, twenty twenty seven, we have some interest from Columbine and those MDUs, Broken Lance area. So it is, you know, we, we did take into account that expansion in the increase in customers. Thanks. Other thoughts?
I just say thanks for expanding on twenty twenty six. I think we should absolutely keep the number that's there to get all those big projects. Um, I think I'm fine keeping the numbers you have for the CIP and I think our conversation that Shannon mentioned with the pro forma, looking at everything again will help inform that, but um, if we decide on that strategy for fiber, I think it's important that we put the dollars behind it to support that strategic plan to get in a positive cash flow.
I might modify my comment. Sorry to jump the gun.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, in, with keeping your comments in mind, I'm okay with twenty six, but I'd, I'd still like to save um, what we could hopefully in the range of half going forward. Certainly, we could make that up by pushing our vendor to um, to do an advertising campaign and, you know, do, do something to, to increase take rates in existing as Kelly was mentioning.
Right.
I'm seeing a lot more ads for it on cable programs coming in. Um, I agree with Carol. I think it's really important. And I think the plan is right to get the MDUs that are just hanging out there waiting for us. They're going to sign up. That's a service to them and a benefit to their tenants or renters. Um, I think then in, in the future, we need to just be careful of not running that cable somewhere. We're not going to get the customers to pay for it. But right now we've got enough people that can benefit to get that cable to them.
Anyone else?
I support the one five next year. I think five million. I'd love to see it connected into whatever result they're getting on the sales side, right? Like, I think five million's too much. I think we've, we've spent tens of millions. We should be seeing the result on the sales side. To me, that's more of a, we don't need to spend more capital. We need a better result from driving sales. Like, change the rate or like create a compelling reason to create that uptake. So I'm with Dick on one five now. Lower it and if they get thirty, forty, fifty percent growth, then we're happy to invest right, right alongside them. But at the current uptake rate, no.
Okay, recap. I agree with Todd. Hey?
Um. I am, I'm content with the numbers that are in there. Um, but with the caveat that I'd like to be, and I know you are, to have you be, continue to be strategic of, you know, the cost benefit. If we're, if we have it in the plan for twenty thirty to go to the Gary Roberts plan and say it costs a million and a half to get there or whatever, if that, if that cost benefit's not there, uh, similar to running down Tiger Road to the, to the Nordic Center. Um, being just very uh, strategic and trying to get MDUs and not being afraid not to use your entire budget if it's not effective.
Great, thank you. Um, I am um, comfortable with twenty twenty six and then I would like to see a reduction in the twenty seven through twenty thirty amount. Um, similar to what Jay stated, which is really to um, improve the take rate around the existing backbone that we already have. I feel a lot less comfortable continuing to put the kind of the longer distance. So I don't know if fifty percent is really the number. I would like to see the number from twenty seven through twenty thirty come down. Okay?
Strategic.
Thank you.
You're putting it fifty percent?
Yeah.
Good. For the exercise, we'll put a fifty percent reduction here, twenty seven to thirty and see where that gets us. Knowing we are only adopting the twenty twenty six budget. This is just a tool.
Yeah, and we can come back and show what those figures will get as far as design goes, getting to certain MDUs or other locations around town that uh, that we could do with that. Yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Thanks, Kristen. Okay, the next one is an asterisk. It's an important infrastructure project. However, we do have some choice here. Right now we have it set as a sinking fund where we're just banking some dollars. I don't have a discrete project yet as we're waiting for recommendations that will come from our drainage master plan update that's underway. So if council would like, we don't have to do a sinking fund and then next year I can bring recommendations for specific projects moving forward. Or we can continue to bank some dollars and we just roll those so that when we're ready to do a two million dollar project, we have it partially funded. So I'd love feedback on the sinking fund versus delaying until we know.
I'd like to keep it. I think it's very important to bank some of those dollars.
And those are expensive projects. I agree with Jay.
And you never really know which one's going to pop up that's needing to be done right now.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to planning it out. So yes, I'm in favor of keeping it.
Perfect. We'll keep it as is. Um, next is our annual overlay in concrete repair. We're proposing slightly lower budget for twenty twenty six. Um, that's because we anticipate less concrete work needed. Um, we do a lot of our ADA per ramp updates and things like that within this project. Next year, I think we're going to be focusing on some of our outlier areas that don't have as much sidewalks such as the Highlands. So we're comfortable with this two point five million dollar budget. And then bumping it back up to three million moving forward.
Shannon, where do we stand with our goal of a seventy rating on all of our roads and streets?
I don't think we're at a seventy everywhere, but I think we're in the next update, I can link our map that shows you the ratings to have a look and give you some more specific.
I'd just like to see us making progress towards hitting that mark.
And if council desires, we can up that budget and go faster. But it is a balance of contractor availability and how much our residents can handle.
Just saying that we need to pour a bunch of money in just to meet, meet the certain number. I'm just curious as to how close we're getting, uh, and are we on target to hit that?
I think we're on target, but I'll get you solid numbers in the next public projects update.
Thanks.
I think the contractor we've been using is excellent to work with from a property owner standpoint. Just a comment.
We have been pleased. We do bid that annually, so we can't guarantee the contractor, but.
No, I know.
Been doing great work.
Just making a comment.
Okay. Next up is an interesting one. Um, last year we decided to pull out, separate from the open space work, some budget to relocate the rec path on McCain. This is a placeholder. I don't think we have a final design pending the THK work. But I wanted to get council's read if you would like to keep that million dollars in the bank for relocating the rec path.
I think we should bump it a year. I don't think we're ready to relocate that rec path until we nail down our use of McCain and with greater detail. So I'd save it and put it out a year if it were me.
Others? I would bump it out. I don't care which year it goes into, but I don't think we need to do it now.
You know, and there's two critical intersections of this current bike path that we need to address. And one is where the McCain Access Road uh, crosses by Coin Valley and then also the Fairview Roundabout. And I do think that those two are extremely critical, but I would agree that it does not appear we're ready for next year.
Agreed.
I'd also broaden the description of it to have it be flexible so that if if the changes on the bike path end up being just on those two junction points, that there's other funds for, you know, investing in McCain, making sure that ends up how we want it, since the other number was maybe a little smaller than we were thinking.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jay and Todd's comments. I, I think we need to keep money in. We may be able to bump it out a year, but keep money in for those two junction points, but between them, um, I, I don't feel a need to have that in there right now.
Move it to twenty twenty seven and then see how we do the design and implementation of the THK plan. Next is another McCain project. This is designed dollars to move forward with the parkland that is proposed adjacent to the Soul Center and Vista Verde Two. Um, we lovingly call it Pond Park because it was a giant pond that we filled in with unconsolidated fill, so it is not buildable. Um, without extensive rework of that fill material. Right now in the uh, master plan for McCain, it is proposed as a one point five acre park.
So are you saying this two hundred thousand is the, is to get that area ready or is it for planning?
It's for planning, for design purposes. If we want to launch.
So it could be shovel ready?
Mm-hmm. We do think this project would have a lot of merits for some GoCo funding perhaps or other grant streams, but we likely need to get situated to apply for those grants.
Okay, so are people comfortable with the two hundred thousand for twenty twenty six?
A real important space for all our residents out there.
Others? Great.
I agree, but it seems like a lot of money to plan something like that. Is that, is that a harder problem? Is that a harder piece to plan because of its, the pond location or?
Um, I think what we did is we anticipated two million dollars construction and just took ten percent of that. We would go to RFP and see what the proposals look like, but I, I imagine it's in the one fifty to two hundred range easy.
That helps knowing where the number came from.
Um, and then we have a couple out there in future years. We have future McCain projects. It could be things like sidewalk, lighting. I think that we want to do out there, maybe trailhead parking, restrooms, but it's out in future years. Um, knowing that we don't have a plan and it's not impacting our cash flow. But we want to be cognizant that there are future improvements that are going to be needed.
I like that way to track the reminder ourselves.
And same with the uh, Riverwalk Center renovations. That's a large one. We pulled it over to future years last year because there were a lot of unknowns around that pending the um, cultural master plan, I think we're calling it. Are we happy keeping that on future or would you like to pull that in?
Are you where it is?
Too.
Are we on sand?
No. Uh, we.
Oh, yeah. Let us say, I don't know where it is.
Now we're on sand.
Sand. This had been a project we have been rolling funds over for quite some time, but we decided to put it back into the five year for better visibility. Um, we're needing a storage facility. Maybe it's just a roof. Maybe it's a building for the sand we use for winter maintenance. Um, it's a great question. Um, I think it might need to go on McCain. We're going to try to fit it into the Public Works campus, but we are really low on space there. And if we do a bus bay barn expansion, um, that's shown on the CIP, we might not be able to fit additional structures given a lot of restrictions we have with easements and utilities running through the Public Works yard. And the master plan does contemplate Public Works uses, as you know, out on McCain. And um, we're getting to that point where we are going to have to start moving more operations to that area.
Shannon, are those big sprung structures, is that what you're talking about?
Sprung structure wouldn't be allowed by code, so we weren't really pursuing that. I'm thinking at one point it was more of like a single shed, a single
Metal.
Bed roof, a simple structure, utilitarian, but we have not done a final design.
Do we currently cover our sand?
Um, we put some of it inside of a bay, but some of it's outside and it should all be covered.
All right, well, we have a few years to think about that.
Just wanted to warm you up to that idea. I see you did really well there.
I just, um, I'll make one comment. I, I, I hope that, that we get the way in on where it goes, because uh.
We're going to start working on a Public Works master plan for the McCain parcel to um, give council a look into how we think the future will hold, what the future will hold out there as far as our needs as our use of Stillson has shrunk. Um, we.
That'd be all.
Sounds like we should heat that area with a wouldn't need.
It'd be amazing.
We wouldn't need it to be covered.
I think it's okay. Overhead utilities. Um, this has been a sinking fund and we had it that way last year. We are thinking about approaching Excel to underground the overhead lines adjacent to Public Works on the west. That could facilitate both the bus barn that we need and some housing that has been contemplated up in what we call the boneyard storage. Nothing yet uh, from a design standpoint, but want to let council know that's where we were thinking of heading with these dollars.
Sounds good. One. Hey?
We feeling okay?
You guys want a break? Let's get through sustainability and then we'll do a break.
Okay, EV chargers. Um, I know there's some questions surrounding this. I'm happy to take questions and Teddy's happy to come down if they get more specific than I have answers for. Questions on EV?
Yes, my real, my question was just are, are these placeholders of seeing where demand is needed and like, what metrics are we using to add additional EV chargers? Um, is there a certain utilization rate we're looking for on a certain of this garage? Are we looking at different, the rec center or Public Works and as we get more uh, electric uh, vehicles in Public Works, does that need to expand? How, how are we utilizing the, the money in this budget?
All right, um, it, it is a bit of a placeholder. We don't have specific projects for each of those years. Um, the general plan is we would like to continue adding The general plan is we would like to continue adding chargers into the South Gondola Parking Garage, maybe four to six ports each year as we see the demand grow. And we do, to answer the other part of your question is we are monitoring utilization of our chargers. We have seen year-over-year growth each year. And then the threshold for deciding when we need to add more is really in my mind, when when someone pulls up to a location and the all the ports are full and there's not an opportunity for them to plug in and charge. We really haven't seen that at, you know, locations like the ice rink, the rec center, and even the parking garage with the caveat of maybe five of the busiest ski days last season, would we see them totally fill up? But that's kind of the the quick answer for what you're asking.
Are we able to get any of the data from the fast chargers up at the library?
So the fast chargers, we've seen 20, a little over 2,700 charging sessions over the last year. September 1st, 2024 to August 31st of this year. That averages out to about eight sessions per day. And the average charge time we're seeing there is about 28 minutes of active charging, 35 minutes of being plugged in at those chargers. And then just to, you know, give you a perspective, those are, those are actually, uh, the town acts as the site hosts, but they're owned and operated by XL Energy. The Towns owns about 50 Level 2 public charging ports and in the same timeframe, we saw about 12,300 sessions at the Towns Level 2 charging ports.
You do that for me? Which one is more demanding?
The 12,321 sessions at the Town-owned Level 2 charging ports and 2,726 sessions at the fast chargers.
That's only two chargers doing that.
Correct. Yeah, it's only two, two plugs are the fast chargers. But, you know, as I mentioned, um, you know, that it works out to an average of about eight sessions per day. And with an average charge time of about 30 minutes, that means about four hours of charging or, you know, an occupied plug at those, between those two fast charging ports at the library.
What about the Towns needs at the bus barn in the Public Works area?
We did just add, we've added eight fleet charging ports for Town fleet vehicles this year, two for Open Space and Trails Office and another six at Public Works for Level 2 chargers. And I do expect that will probably cover a lot of our light duty fleet charging needs. Probably for the next four or five years. The bus barn, we are in the process of planning some additional chargers for the incoming buses for those. And there's some grant support for behind those as well.
Teddy, how many chargers is $50,000?
I think with that and leveraging grant support, we can continue to chip away at the four to six additional ports in the South Gondola Parking Garage with that amount. So I think it would cover that.
And do we have an option to do more of the high, the ones at the library or not? We would never put those in ourself, is that?
We've, we haven't, uh, you know, once we got the option of having Excel provide some fast charging, we kind of continued with the Town strategy of Level 2 charging. If there is a demand or council wanted us to look into putting in fast chargers we can, do just like the caveat that it's a, it's a orders of magnitude more expensive than Level 2 charging to do that.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess part of my struggle is one of our goals has been park a car all day and leave it. We don't want them moving, but I feel like when we do that in the charging station spots, then cars are just sitting there. I mean, they're very slow, so they do need to charge. But I'm wondering if if we're kind of like disincentivizing more cars moving through those ports because cars are sitting there all day when they may not need to. And I don't know that that's a problem we can solve, but that's why I like faster chargers that we can just move cars through more quickly.
Got it. Yeah. I mean, with with the South Gondola Garage being our main hub of EV charging opportunities for that location, there's no time limit on the charging, so they can plug in and charge as long as they need. The average charge time that we've seen for our Level 2 chargers is about two hours and 20 minutes of actively charging with vehicles plugged in for about four hours. And then to your point about wanting to see some turnover with those spaces at other locations like the rec center and even our one out front of Town Hall here, we do have a a four-hour time limit. Um, and then an overstate, you get kicks in if they stay plugged in longer than four hours at some of those other locations that we have those concerns about.
Since that Excel or somebody else would put in some fast chargers, some additional ones?
They, the transportation electrification plan that funded the initial two, since they're no longer doing Excel-owned fast chargers. Got them installed, but then they kind of stopped doing it, I think. And the PUC proceedings that informed it, there is a lot of pushback from private charging companies that wanted to provide the fast chargers. And they felt like having the utility come in and and provide fast charging was stepping in their their toes a little bit. And so the direction there was for them to kind of withdraw.
I appreciate this conversation. This is a small amount of money. I think we should go ahead and support this and move forward.
Totally agree. And I wonder if we contemplate as we look at positive points down the road, maybe some sort of investment in a fractional public EV charger rather than, you know, the the three in the garage, just as we're working on that. Biggest two neighborhood reservation. Maybe that's a way to help grow the investment. But yeah, it's small. Sounds good.
I'm in agreement. To reinforce it, I just had a friend say they're going to to purchase a EV because and they don't have enough electricity capacity in their house to charge it at home. They said, but their comment was, well, they're all over town. I I could get plenty of places charged.
We are looking to implement chargers in any other capital projects we do like F lot improvements. Or if we start touching Tiger Jet and the Riverwalk Center, we build those in on top of the work Teddy's doing.
All right. Geothermal?
Geothermal. So the $200,000 that we're looking for approval for 2026 is to fund the Phase 2 feasibility study. That would be a site-specific study where they actually do a borehole to test how well our sub, subgrade, our geology could support a network. The capital suggested for the next three years, I think, it's up to council if we want to bank that for now, not knowing what investment will be needed until we complete more of the feasibility study. So I think this is an area, if you chose to hold off on reserving it or if we want to show that we are willing to invest these dollars, we could keep them.
Shannon, you're saying after this study, if we decide to move forward, those 2 million placeholders, they could vary pretty significantly?
I think so. I think those are just round placeholders at this point. We really need the next piece of the study to inform us on what that infrastructure would look like if it's feasible.
I'm in favor of the 200,000 to inform us. I'm not in favor of the placeholders. It's just, it's, it's too much money right now. We can't afford it. I want to see a pro forma and really be on board, really understand it better. So I would like to see the 200 stay. I'd like to see the the 6 million pushed out to later years.
See a lot of head nodding. Is anyone in objection to that?
I mean, I think this is something that we're really interested in pursuing and those are big price tags. I'd be in favor in dropping it in half as a placeholder. I mean, either way, it seems like our, it's not a fun balance issue to keep these dollars earmarked here. So instead of eliminating it completely, I'd drop it by half.
Yeah, I agree with Carol. I mean, I definitely understand the the want to sort of zero those out because it looks better, but if we came, if the pilot comes back and says that there's good potential specifically for this campus where the professional building needs a new HVAC system anyway, I think we would really be interested in moving forward. And so rather than starting from zero, I think at least from three would be less painful place to start from. So I'd like to keep it in there just to consider, just to continue to consider alternative energy.
How does the council as a whole feel about that strategy?
I'd be good with that. I want to keep it in there. But keep it in at 2 million or 1 million. We'll find out after the study whether it's a go and then we'll know more about exactly what we should budget, but placeholder of some kind.
I think I'd want to see the numbers prove out to make sure the investment's worthwhile. Get a small placeholder, smaller placeholder. Some mills fine. I worry about the return on it and certainly the the study will show it.
Producing it sounds good.
Okay. We'll go with a million. I don't know what the numbers.
There you go.
28 through 30?
What'd you say, Jay?
Just have a million dollars in from 28 to 30, so push it out a year. That would probably be.
Reasonable. Have one, we'd start anyway. Up the cash flow, hello. Okay, um, but.
That gives us more time to plan and really.
Yeah, I think that's realistic.
I guess I could get on board to that, pushing it out a year and then cutting it now.
Perfect. So we've brought back into the five-year some funding for a permanent e-delivery structure. Knowing that we do not know the permanent location, I don't have that answer for you. But if we do believe that we will support funding a permanent structure, we would recommend putting it in the five-year at this point and not in future years.
Sounds good to me.
I seem to be the one that always goes first. I'd like to see us push it out a year and cut it, cut it in half.
I think we can.
The two and a half. And I'd prefer to have this discussion later because I think there's opportunity for partners in this.
So I think the only thing about pushing it out a year is that with City Market doing their redevelopment, we pretty much have to have a new location by 2028 because they're going to be using the location that we're currently sitting on. So.
Know that we know that at this point because doesn't sound like they're really talking to us, so.
So what they've, they told us was 2028. We've gotten a little bit more sort of background information that has sort of led us to believe that maybe their original plan for the location may have shifted. We're hoping to meet with them the first week of October. I'm hoping to have a phone call with them before that. It's, it is a, a little bit of a shot in the dark because if, if we can partner, we still need a temporary, a new temporary location while they build. So we really are taking a guess at what we might need and when we might need it because we're, we're just waiting on that kind of direction from the developer.
Then maybe we won't need it, but at least it would be there for us if we keep it where it is.
I'd cut it in half then.
Anyone else?
I, I do, I think we have, the community has seen the value of this program and I'd like to see it fully supported in, um, in, in our plan and our CIP at the current amounts. I know that it is uncertain, but at this point to display that it's our commitment and it is our intention to keep this program moving forward in, in whatever form it may be and wherever it might be.
I agree with Jay.
I support the investment.
You have a point. Look where it is.
All right. I think we're going to take a little break. Set her right with everyone. Five minutes and then we'll come back to parking and transportation.
Cost me dick.
This was such a This was such a, a, it was a funny fact of.
Oh, it's high ratio.
A little bit about the projects, but unfortunately now we don't have too much time left. So maybe we can both keep comments to a minimum and also make sure that anything that we are discussing in depth is like a little bit bigger of a ticket item. Um, and then hopefully Shannon can usher us through this a little bit quickly.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Okay, up first is our favorite Blue River Pathways project. For 2026, we have the Sawmill pedestrian connection, which I brought to you in a recent work session. And I believe we have approval to go to construction with that. And I also am recommending we start looking at some vegetation management along the Blue River. I had a small amount of dollars in there just to get us started because I'm still a little unclear of what our vision is. So I don't want to get into a large project. I'm in 2026 and I do want to start moving on that. I've then outlined a series of low-hanging fruit, smaller cost projects over the next five years, as well as what I see as the most time-sensitive of the infrastructure projects is the pedestrian bridge at the Ice House lot to replace that covered bridge that has the tough angles to bike. Give back if there are some low-hanging fruit projects that you don't see on here that I should contemplate for the next five years. Or if there's something we definitely need to get done in 2026 that's not on my list.
Right. Are people generally happy with this? Anything she missed?
I'm happy with it.
Anybody else happy? Great. Okay, good. Well done.
One is wayfinding phase two. I want to talk about this a little bit. Um, ComDev came. We had a discussion with ComDev about maybe doing a more comprehensive look on, um, wayfinding between the BTO's work, open space work and the proposed work for the Blue River Pathways. I'm wondering if council wants to bump some design dollars up to 2026 to help ComDev um, hire a consultant that can take a quick, broad look at some of our signage plans.
About how much are you thinking?
Um, I had one fifty for an overall one. Um, it'd probably be at least one hundred. Or I could just bump that whole one fifty to 2026 and see, um, what that contract looks like once they go to RFP.
And Shannon, would this be focusing on Main Street or what, what would be the emphasis of this, um, signage plan?
I think if I understand correctly, it's to look at some broad stroke things. Are we using the same font types? Do we make sure our colors and symbology is unified? Are we using our branding consistently across all the signs? Not necessarily to pick locations for a ton of signs, but to make sure that our sign family is really congruent and, um, showing off what we have. Does that help?
Yeah, and I think, uh, yeah.
You can say no and we'll just do it at a staff level if you're not willing to spend some consultant dollars. But this would be the time if we do want to bring in some outside help.
I guess with the plans that we have, I'm content with leaving that blank and not putting in, uh, CIP dollars.
We'll handle it at a staff level.
Okay.
Okay. Leaving it, it was just if we wanted to bump it up. Um, we would like to start design on the F lot parking lot improvements in 2026. That has been tracking on the five-year for quite some time and it's, it's gotten its chance now that we'll initiate that design work. The next one is.
Like to push that out a year just because I'd, I'd like to get a little bit of insight as to what's coming and on with Peak Nine redevelopment. So that would be my reason. I, I think it needs to be done at some point, but, uh, I don't want to spend it and then have redevelopment planned that, that catches us by surprise. So I'd like to push it out a year.
Anyone else?
Can you provide a little color? Is this something that is in desperate? Uh, next 12 months has to happen or are we okay?
No, it's, it's design. If we want to push the design out a year, we'll continue to do maintenance repairs on F lot like we have been and I don't see it to be a big problem. I didn't put asterisks next to it, so you're free to move it.
I wouldn't have touched it if it had.
Everyone in agreement with Dick to just push this to sort of hang out while the resort looks at Peak Nine?
I would move both over, so the one fifty over one and five hundred over one, please.
Um, next, we're continuing to propose investment in the Dark Sky program with converting our pedestrian lighting. Next is another one of those sinking funds. The sidewalk master plan hasn't gotten as much attention the last few years. And we've been banking money to do projects as they come up to do sidewalk extensions and adding new sidewalks. Um, so I have a question. Do we want to continue to have that as a sinking fund at two fifty a year? And then do we want to pursue the discrete project I have? That's a sidewalk extension from the Entrada project north along Highway nine to Breck Inn. That was the next one on this.
For the bus stop, really?
Uh huh, yeah. For staff to go to that bus stop.
The one other thing I'll just point out is anytime we add sidewalk, we add operational cost. So as we're thinking about that, just remember it's, you know, we need people, we need equipment, we need all the things if we're adding sidewalks.
I think we need that for safety, but I don't think we give up trying to find a partner to help us. Um, we can leave it in, but I.
Perhaps we pursue the design. I think I misunderstood the complexity of that project initially. I thought there was enough room to easily fit this in the right of way, but I think we need to initiate some survey work and perhaps engage the neighbors. So perhaps, should I go ahead with design and then we'll pause on construction?
Well, that's dollar amount covered design here.
They'll cover design and then we'll have leftovers to contribute to construction.
Whatever you think. I don't feel like I can make this decision.
We'll keep it going with some design. Okay, next up is moving forward with some design dollars in 2026. Or a new bus barn design. As we grow our electric fleet, we need additional storage and um, chargers for these buses. They're longer than the standard bus, the need for the bus bays because of the charging infrastructure. So we're either needing to retrofit existing or building new. We've been applying for grants without success over the last five years. It's time to move forward if we want to continue to grow our electric fleet.
Does this make sense to layer into any sort of regional transit authority we put together?
Great question.
I think we need these regardless if the RTA moves forward. We are still going to have rolling stock that we need to house.
Yeah.
So I think this investment is independent.
I think I was more curious about who would fund it, us or them, if it delays.
I imagine we'll have a funding piece of the RTA.
And if, if the RTA goes forward on the schedule that had been proposed, I don't think there's new revenue stream initially. So it, I think any revenue we might see from that is pretty far off.
Thank you.
We'll keep that.
Yeah, I mean, we're just relying on you guys telling us what you need, I think.
Then we, next we have a series of future projects just to keep on our radar as the Public Works Office Expansion, Future Roundabouts, possibly a new transit center at the Gondola and the Village Roundabout Design. If council would like to pull any of those into the five-year off of future, now would be a good time to do that.
Just so we're all thinking the same, I'd like to expand the language on Transit Center into the transit location. I mean, I think we, we, you know, I, we, we need to have some discussions with the SCIRI and when, when the time does come to replace that building, I, I think it important that we do it at the same time. Try to, uh, design a better functioning, um, you know, facility as a whole. Um, and you know, we might need some more land. So if we have opportunities to talk and work with the SCIRI um, to, to possibly acquire a little more land under the Gondola, um, which is limited use, but this would be an approved use to, uh, to really make that function as well as absolutely possible.
How about?
We'd make it work now, but, uh, I think it could be better with a little more land and.
About Transit Center and hub expansion. Does that feel more encompassing?
Yeah.
Thanks. No problem. Okay, that gets us to the end of parking and transportation. Were there any other questions on that?
Um, did we?
Go ahead.
The Village Roundabout or, or Park, Park Avenue Southwest or South, um, I, I just. You know, I don't know. I, I guess that makes sense through design yet until we understand redevelopment. But I just, you know, we've got issues at the south end of town coming into town. That intersection's a problem, that south.
The park in Maine?
The park in, in Maine and it probably is going to function best with the second one as well, um, at Village. I think that's going to be an opportunity to possibly partner. But, um, we need to be really, keep that in the forefront. I, I don't think it makes sense to do it by ourselves now. We can't afford it. But, um, it, it's very needed, right? It's needed right now. And I think we've got to get back to some of the structured projects here. General comment, not looking to make it take any action, just a general comment.
I think we need to keep it on our radar, but we don't know enough about what's going to happen on the south end of town.
I think keeping it in future years is good. It has the visibility, makes us talk about it and we can always pull it in in coming years if that were to be. Okay. We can move in, uh, we have childcare next. Do we have questions? I feel the council is pretty up to speed on these two projects. The first is, I'm looking at design for any upgrades or expansion possible for the Little Red Schoolhouse and then the Montessori, um, facility repairs.
I know, I don't necessarily want to change these numbers, but why are we going to get an accurate? Do we know when we're going to get an accurate number from the waiting list? It's really important to, we.
I wish I had a date certain. I could tell you that John's done some work with the Breck numbers and it's, it is a much reduced number and, and talking to ECO, um, I think there's general consensus that the six hundred, seven hundred child number that was on the ECO list is inflated for a variety of reasons. So there is, um, I think some work being done in the childcare needs assessment that will address waitlist. We're trying to do some of it on our end just in Breck to give us a better idea of what's happening here. But, um, I'd say it's probably a solid year before we have.
Because I just think after these projects, we need to think long and hard about childcare dollars. And maybe we just need to be more specific about the age group and, and only fund things that improve that, the infant numbers.
Yeah, Dick, I couldn't agree more. And I think when we have those numbers in a year, it'll inform that future planning. Um, for right now, I think our CIP numbers for Little Red. CIP numbers for Little Red, I mean, that's a much needed project and Montessori. Is essential too, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with things too, yeah.
The hundred and fifty design, does that include like smaller repairs that there with like roof and things like that that they need? Now?
That's the.
Purely design. Okay, and then that million dollars, uh, that would be the, the cost of the expansion? Are there grant dollars available for that expansion possibly? Where we would want to push that million dollars up to twenty eight and have the planning done so that it is shovel ready?
I'm not aware of grant dollars.
Found any. We'll keep as presented in the CIP for those childcare projects. To water fund capital projects next. I think James Phelps is gonna come down and answer specific questions that. We'll see, we marked um, nearly all of these water fund projects with an asterisk. They are. Critical infrastructure projects that um. That need to get done.
Um, I think in the, um, just keeping time. Um, in mind here, if you have, you know, some specific questions about these projects, please ask. But I don't think we need to go through line by line. And obviously, the, the biggest project is the Gary Roberts Treatment Plant, so. Um, maybe ask any questions you have of projects. Besides Gary Roberts and then have James tell you a little bit about that project. And why it's expensive and that kind of thing, and we can roll from there.
Yeah, you know, Dave did a nice job earlier, just kind of, just as Shannon just stated too, that. Really, the, the lion's share of all this money is the, the new. It's water treatment plant, so happy to take any questions on. Any of the other projects there. A lot of them are related to um, some of the pre-work that's needed for our system to. Um, in preparation for Gary Roberts, for instance, the Water Main Silver Queen to mainstream phase. Um, phase one, phase two projects. Um, that has to do with upgrading some water lines. And keep in mind that everything in water we're talking about is, the system is greater than fifty years old. Fifty-five to. You know, specifically for some of these, and so. A lot of the money that we're gonna be spending in the subsequent years is really related to just repairing the infrastructure that. Is just kind of met design life and needs to be upgraded. The other, the other piece. That has been known and is kind of coming into more focus right now with the design and um. Of the Gary Roberts is, is that. There are system, the way that we balance the system, the pressure zones of the system. A lot of the water lines and some of these projects here specifically. Are gonna provide some better balance for the pressures zones of the system. Right now, we do have challenges with. Pressure in the south side of town, whether that's in the Warriors Mark area. Or even in Wellington neighborhood, some of those. Pressure zones that are on the, on the same um, gradient as the Clearwell at the Tarn. Um, that being said, the upgrades to the water lines will kind of help us in the future. And the other big piece to all this too is our water demand. And subsequent, our production has gone up quite a bit over the years. And so part of what we're working on right now with um, Com Dev is. As we do the, the comp plan update, we're also in turn doing a. There's a piece of that that's looking at our water demand as it is current. And then what that looks like as we build out into the future. Um, you know, we've always talked about, we do have. Um, a great water portfolio and that piece is certainly a big piece of it, but the. Um, that portfolio is only as good as what we're able to do as far as production and, and moving the water around in the system. And that's kind of where some of the design challenges and some of the, certainly the cost, costs exist today.
Real expensive one.
Absolutely necessary. Last thing we want is to have this go down. Uh, because we're not maintaining it. I just have one question, James. It seems to me that in the past. There would be federal dollars available for something like this. Is there any potential for that?
Um, I'm gonna say yes, we, you know, I think we all along, you know, through not knowing the projects we've recently completed, but. For the ones that we're, you know, have on this um. Project list, we're always looking for those federal dollars. And um, you know, our consultant right now, we've charged them with. They have some experience in different sources as well, so we're looking at certainly the ones that we've worked, partners we've worked. With in the past, whether that's the state revolving fund, or the bureau reclamation, or CWCB. Um, you know, it's always a matter of if they're gonna be grant funds or loan dollars and again, Dave kind of spoke briefly to. What that looks like, you know, what our ability to take out a loan where that threshold lies.
And would it make sense to start a conversation with our elected representatives and maybe have a white paper, some talking points?
Yeah, I think absolutely. Um, you know, both Dave and I have recently sat in on a seminar or a um. A webinar that spoke to SRF, SRF Fund specifically. And so there is a, there is some pre-work that you, that can be done to just, if nothing else, have our name on a list so we can. Have that opportunity to engage in a conversation as those funds are announced and, and available, so, yeah, we are doing that work.
Thanks. Otherwise. No comments.
It's clearly important, um, certainly support the investment. Would love to see if there's a way on the. The, the water fee lane to. Keep us shy of that thirty million dollar debt load, you know, how do you, how do you get that down to twenty-five or twenty over five, ten years? Just to. Yeah, reduce that debt load.
Yeah, that's, you know, one of the things that Dave mentioned earlier as well was is that. Our current water rates increases, they do sunset in twenty twenty-seven. We're actually gonna be next year, gonna be doing, starting to do the work for another water rate study. And as part of that, our goal is, is to have a final report that's kind of out in front of preparation for. Um, development of the twenty twenty-eight budget, so we can come with strong recommendation of what. We really should be looking at or need to do in terms of water rates.
Great. Thanks, James. I'm same as Todd, I'm supportive of the expense side. I'd love to, you know, to explore the revenue side.
All right. Thank you. So, I don't know, Lori is here. If you wanna come down, Lori, just in case there are questions. Um, we didn't have this portion of the um, cash flow sheet or the CIP in the. In Shannon's CIP, so apologies for kind of moving around on you. Um, we're happy to answer any questions you might have on this, I think the. There's a couple of things, um, obviously the biggest is runway phase two. Um, and then the other is you have, you continue to have three point three million dollars per year in housing helps. And two point five million per year in buy downs. Um. You know, we are doing the twelve million dollar purchase, which also shows up in there, and as Dave talked about earlier, will be. Essentially considered a buy down where we will recoup some of that expense over a couple of years. Um, you could reduce your buy downs. I throw that out. I know there hasn't been an appetite to do that in the past, but I just wanted to. To share that as an opportunity. Um, so kind of with all of that in mind, we're happy to answer any questions. Um, and I will say if, um. If I had a recommendation to make today, it would be to uh, pause on runway phase two, push that out to future years.
All right, questions, comments on this part?
What's that total dollar spend in the green there? I'm curious. It's a big one. Cool. Thanks.
What was it?
Eighty-six. I'm supportive of pushing out phase two in doubt years and we'll see how phase one rolls along and, yeah, keep up the great work.
I agree.
I agree, and I would keep buy down number there in thinking. It's a fluid number with housing helps, so if housing helps continues at the pace it's going. We could move, maybe move a little buy down money over to housing helps.
Can we take, uh, can we keep phase two into future years so that we have that? Lock in there, um, and be able to see it. As far as. This really is for that budgeting pur- purposes, we're not making any final decisions here, we're just kind of.
No, you're not making any, y- you know, you know, and it is, you know, probably more for the public to know, you make these decisions. Every year, so you don't, we don't have a multi-year budget. We're looking at twenty twenty-six, this is for planning purposes, it is, you know, part of our, um. I'll get it wrong, restriction or reserve policy, whichever finance restrictions. Um, so that we don't, you know, actively spend the money, but that's also a policy decision on the part of council, so this is an exercise, and I do think it's important. You know, whether it's the public that's listening or here today, or it's a Summit Daily News writing an article. To understand that the town is in a very good cash position. So you're not pushing out runway phase two to future years because we're not in a good position, it's just. Really being thoughtful about our, especially our multi-million dollar projects, right? These are big dollar projects, there's a lot that could happen in the next few years, and so this is just. It's just being um, fiscally responsible, I think, to push it out and see where you end up in the next couple of years. Um, the other thing that I think is important is clearly by what you see on the screen, even though you've pushed that eighteen and a half million dollars out. The town is still actively involved in providing housing for our community, right? It's still, if you decide to move forward with runway phase one, that's eighty-one units, you're still doing buy downs and housing helps, so in. In no way, shape or form should this decision be seen as the town pulling back in any way. On your commitment to housing.
What's that updated number now? Cause it's huge, right to your point, right? No, 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 sorry, the housing.
It's minus the eighteen-five.
Yeah, I wanna just piggyback on what Shannon's saying there, it's still seventy million dollar investment and another. Twenty-three-three coming in out here, so close to a hundred million dollars, like the town of Breck's all in on housing, clearly.
Great point.
Any other questions, thoughts on any of this budget?
I mean, can we see where that put us? Please.
Survey says.
It's better, it'll, and it will fluctuate.
Like always, we can never do everything we want to do every year.
Right, and as we see how the economy trends and what our, you know, fiscal position, what that looks like. You all, every year, will make decisions on what projects to move forward on and which ones to hold back on. And on some of these things, you will have additional conversation during that October fourteenth meeting.
On that point, Shannon, I, I'd love to see us leave ourselves more time significantly, more time for the Oc- October fourth meeting. Um. It, for years, we always took a whole day to do the budget, nine AM till five or six and. Um, as, as complicated as the budget is, as hard as these decisions are, we always seem to rush, just like tonight. Um, I would like to see us go back to that format and each department head has the chance to. To be in front of us and, and be there to talk about each project and each pro forma and, and um. Look at the, the budgets for each department very, very carefully and, and um. We, we don't have time. We didn't have time tonight, we're not gonna have time on the fourth. Um, I really would. You know, love to encourage all of us to um, invest the day and, and take the time it takes to get this budget. Where we need it.
Um, so I guess I would just ask council, we can certain, we can make that in a full day. Um, we were planning on a one PM start, we can start, you know, before noon. What is your preference? I'm sure if you want to have a full day retreat, we can build a day. Um, but I also, you know, it really depends on how much conversation you all want to have. And I want to be thoughtful about your respective schedules.
I would leave it to Shannon and Kelly as the chair of these meetings to talk about what is reasonable, if we need to add a little bit. More time, um, because I agree we shouldn't rush anything, but um, if there are ways or. Kind of best practices we establish where we're not repeating each other or asking the same questions, I think. We could get as much value from the meeting without quite as much time, so I defer to. Kelly and Shannon to talk about that.
Is that meeting October seventh? October fourteen.
Fourteen.
And we can, uh, Dave and I can work on an agenda for that day. And pretty quickly here, get with Kelly to come up with what we think is the appropriate amount of time and then get that to you all as quickly as possible. So you can plan.
Yeah, I would like your feedback. I mean, I think if we're going from starting at one, then maybe we don't need to start at nine, but I think. What we'd like to empower you to tell us is that we need more time than at one o'clock.
Okay. We'll work on that. Anything else on the CIP or anything, Dave, that you wanted to go over? I know the debt schedule was in there. You all have asked for that in the past. You have any questions on that? And we'll have that as part of the budget meeting as well, so if you take a look at that and have questions, we can answer them then.
And you'll see this again when we meet on the fourteenth, we'll have a resizzle and see how we're looking, go from there.
Great. Thank you. It's very clear to all of us how much work everybody has put into. Giving us the information we need to make these decisions that are obviously. Difficult and we can't do everything, like Jay said, so thank you guys very much for putting so much work and effort into this for our community.
Thank you for the great direction.
Okay, we're gonna go right into the McCain Open Space Plan presentation.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, yep, shifting gears to talk about McCain. Um, I am here today with Sam and Craig from THK and Carrie from ERO and then. Laura Hickey from CDR will be joining virtually. Uh, I'll just make this quick and let them get to their presentation, but just an overview, we're nearing the end of this kind of middle phase of this design process. Um. Has put together a couple of concept ideas for designing the McCain Plan and gotten input from. BOSAC and a few other public engagement events. Uh, and as we now have concept ideas, we've been discussing some of these with Public Works and making sure we're addressing their concerns and we'll. Continue to meet with them. Through this process, um, so. The goal here is to have you um, look over the presentation with THK and then. Uh, be able to ask questions and provide comments, and that'll be incorporated into a final draft proposal. Which will come back to us and at BOSAC at the end of October, planning commission early November and then council. November eleventh, um, just to quickly. Review the, the BOSAC discussion in late August and Jay, please elaborate as, as appropriate, but. Uh, in brief. But in brief, they were very supportive of concept two. I mean, they strongly supportive of it, I would say. They, they really appreciated the lower intensity of the design and preferred a lot of the natural features like natural soft surfaces over pavement and trees instead of manufactured shade structures. They did express concern, things we'll have to work through, you know, challenges of irrigation and maintenance and associated costs. Making sure we're planning for winter use, taking advantage of the flat topography. There's some accessibility opportunities there. And then just, we need to work through the rec path alignment because that's a key component in this design.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Do we want to have Laura speak first? I'm Craig Carr with THK. Thanks for being back here again today. I think we'll let Laura, Laura speak briefly about the, the engagement process again, just give you a brief update. And Duke's done a great job of saying what we heard, so that makes it easy for me as well. But Laura, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Did we want to pull up any slides?
Yes.
Here we go.
Let's, let's, let's skip forward by like three, I think. One more, one more. There we go.
All right. Hi, everybody. I am Laura Hickey. Thanks for letting me join you virtually today. I'm on the McCain Open Space Planning Consultant Team with CDR Associates. I'm helping lead the engagement. So this is just, just wanted to give you a quick overview of what we heard in Phase One and kind of how Phase Two has been going so far. So Phase One, we really wanted to engage the community around a vision for McCain Open Space to inform THK's designs. So if you want to go to the next slide. We, we launched a survey and we had a couple of workshops at Vista Verde. And what we heard back from and what we asked mostly about were around the amenity interests and the access interest to the space. So generally speaking, walking trails, biking trails and fishing access were the top interests as, as far as use of the space. And then you can see there are a lot of different ideas that were kind of moderately or lightly supported. But a lot of these amenities show up throughout Concepts One and Two put together by THK in order to reflect those, those interests from the community. You can go to the next slide. And as far as access, a lot of the responses really were interested in accessing the space either from the neighborhood of Vista Verde, from the neighborhoods across Highway Nine, or from the, the Blue River Bike Way that kind of already connects to the space. So again, you'll see those thoughts of how that access fits into some of the design concepts in, in THK's plans. And we had pretty, pretty good engagement in Phase One from those workshops, from the survey. And in Phase Two, we've done a lot to build off of that. So if you want to go to the next slide here. In person, we presented to BOSAC on August eighteenth. We hosted a community meeting at the Rec Center on August twentieth. Open Space and Trail Staff had a neighborhood event at Vista Verde just last week, last Thursday on the fourth. And then obviously, we're here today with you all to give you a presentation. Throughout all of Phase Two, we have launched a story map, which is a project webpage that's interactive. And we have been circulating that story map through follow-on emails and outreach to HOAs and interested stakeholder groups and anybody who signed up for our community notification list and email notification list from Phase One or from that community meeting at the Rec Center. We have that story map available in both English and Spanish as well as the surveys for concept feedback. We're gonna extend the deadline on that survey to look to do a bit more outreach and get some more responses there. And we are going to set up a meeting with the US Forest Service and CPW to just check with those adjacent landowners and make sure that the plan is in alignment and supported by them as well. So really looking to get more feedback and more traffic to the, the survey. The story map page itself, I checked today. And as of today, the English webpage version has four hundred eighty-eight visits. And the Spanish version has about twenty-five visits. So there's a difference in visitation there. But it seems people are at least learning about the, the Open Space Plan, if not taking our survey quite yet. So with that, I will hand it to Sam to talk about the concepts themselves and get your thoughts on them.
Yeah, really quick, I would like Carrie from ERO to just go really quickly through her site assessment work, which was at the beginning of the presentation. So if we could just go back. And then we'll jump into the concepts, but this was a crucial part to the assessment and everything as well. So.
Hi, I'm Carrie Tanner. I'm a natural resource planner with ERO Resources as part of the consultant team. So we, myself and an ecologist were onsite back in June just to get a look at the property and understand the vegetation, the hydrology, any wildlife we could see, recreational resources, et cetera. And we, while we were there, we were thinking a bit about opportunities and constraints of the property to bring back to the THK team to incorporate in their concepts. So some opportunities that we saw onsite, a lot of the seeding efforts that have been done in the past restoration, they're thriving particularly closer to the river that you get. Just the more water, those plants are establishing pretty well. We, of course, noted that the river is a great attractant for wildlife coming down from the mountainside. It's a great place for them to get to the water as well as just a place to kind of be there on the, on the stream side. And then also noted a lot of great connections to existing recreational opportunities like rec path and some other trails that are in the vicinity, as well as great access that is compatible with both the restoration efforts and the river itself for future recreational opportunities like fishing and things like that. A few constraints. So while some of the vegetation is doing really well, there are some struggling willow stakes and things like that, particularly along some of the eroded edge banks of the river. And of course, over time, that will continue to establish and that's something to work on. But just something we noted. And then we also noted that a general increase in users of the property is likely going to dissuade some of the wildlife from returning over time. So that's just something to consider when you're thinking of people being on the property pretty often. And then we also noted social trail formation is already occurring. A lot of people are trying to get to the river as it is right now. So that's something that will be pretty difficult to control in the long run without proper design and management. And then also noted a lot of high traffic on the rec path going through there. So safety is definitely a concern and just wanting to make sure in the plans moving forward that there's great connection between the, the two. So some recommendations, I'll go pretty quick through this because the next slide has a map that kind of shows it a little better. But definitely want to focus some weed control efforts in the northern and southern portions of the property. That's the area where there's the most concentrated areas of weeds. Also considering incorporating some more shrub species along the river, which Sam and Craig did a great job incorporating that into the concepts that you'll see. And then we talked a bit about with the town, considering adding a no public access on that western side of the river just to formally designate keeping the public out of there as much as possible so that it continues to be a great area for wildlife to come to and be able to get to the, the water's edge. We also talked a lot about incorporating a raptor roost or nest area on that western side because there's a lot of raptor activity kind of over the property. But there's of course not any tall vegetation for them to land in as it stands right now. So something just to attract them more to the property would be great. And then we had wildlife cameras in here, but the town's already on it and they already had those out there on the, on the site. So that's great to hear. And then just talked a bit about including some deterrents for social trails. So ropes and fences, additional shrub plantings, any signage and things that you can incorporate in ways to tell the, the public that, hey, this is a restoration area. We want you to keep off. And it's really sensitive, things like that, that'll help keep people out of there. And then also providing a number of access points to the property in places that you know people are gonna want to get in will be really helpful in trying to combat some of that social trail proliferation. So this is just kind of a map version of a lot of what I just talked about. But as you can see, there's that kind of yellow hatching on the west side of the river. That would be the no public access. We have the raptor roof site there and some potential beach access areas along the eastern side. And then a couple of pink blobs were those high priority weed areas are. I think that's all on mine.
So we can go back through these again, and then there should be this slide, yes. So this was the original opportunities map that we put together after, or right before the first round of engagement. This was the first initial take at guiding the design process through here. And so there are things on here, some of which have stayed in the plans, some of which haven't. This is really just here as a reminder as to sort of how we started and how this informed a lot of the initial ideas. So we can move on to the next one. I would like to just preface that there are a lot of slides here and recognizing that you guys have had the chance to review the packet. I'm going to spend more time on the overall concepts, like this one we're seeing here, and the feature area slides and less time on some of the precedent imagery and things that we shared just because I think I would rather focus time for discussion and giving you guys time to ask questions and things. So, but I will let Craig talk through the two concepts, the two overall concepts.
Thanks, Sam. As you'll, as you've probably looked at these ahead of time, but when we look at the two concepts, again, as Duke had pointed out, we really stressed, they're very similar in a lot of, in a lot of parts of the plans. But what we were really after was what people thought about the intensity of development and the, and the extent and type of uses that we might put out here, types of trails paved or soft surface trails. Because that, that I saw and when you saw the opportunities map was really, as a front country open space, there's gonna be a lot of activity here and we really have to balance conservation with recreation. And so that was, that was really a lot of the emphasis of this. So this first plan, Concept A, again, I'm gonna go through these things and you'll see that a lot of the elements are the same on both plans. It's, it's, it's in more the details of. On, on Carrie's plan, she had pointed out what they felt were, you know, some, some good or preferred locations for providing access to the river. Again, part of that balancing act is we want people to be able to get to the river and engage with it. But we also want to protect it and, and, and give the river a chance to continue its recovery and, and, you know, kind of maturing as a restoration effort. And so there's a difference in the types of, types of paving that we've shown. But let me just, I'll walk through generally some of these feature areas and then you'll see them in more detail. Their feature area, the first feature area, I think is important. It's actually called Area Two. That relates to the, to the, you know, the wildlife or the, the roosting opportunity and viewing wildlife. That location has a little bit of elevation there, so it's elevated above the river a little higher and then has great views over to the west side of the river and where we've, you know, made this, proposed this opportunity for a roosting or nesting platform. In the middle site, feature area, it looks like it's called Five. I'm testing my eyesight here tonight. We really see that as a really fun opportunity to create a wildflower meadow and take advantage of, it's actually within the floodway of the river, so we don't want to put a lot of improvement. But so where we can go out and kind of jumpstart the reintegration of more kind of biodiversity and bring more pollinators and more native perennials into that area and make it a really fun feature area to go out and engage along the river. Then there's a couple of other areas, you know, to the, to the north of that. Area Six is another opportunity for the, for people to engage in the river, a picnic space and shoreline access. And then again, down near to Vista Verde, there's another opportunity. Those, those shoreline access points are on what's called a point bar, kind of the inside of the back curves of the river. Because that's, that's where we get sediment deposit as opposed to the, the erosion that we want to try to manage on the cut banks on the outside of the river. And so it's easier for people to access the water. It's actually easier for that shoreline to recover because it's part of that natural process. There's, there's soil being redeposited. The footprints left go away every time we get a little change in rainfall, those kind of things. So that's where we focus those, those, those points of access. You'll see, and Sam will explain in more detail, when we look at these, these feature areas in detail, the idea of creating a fence that's not a fence by using boulders and cobbles and even more plantings that just naturally discourage and can direct people away from the banks. Because you just, you just don't want to try to walk over a bunch of cobbles and boulders. And then it also fits into that natural setting, especially since we've gotten most, most of the input would be to go to the less intensive and less impactful, you know, development of the area. I think the big thing to, and again, we'll have to work out with the rec path alignment. This plan shows if you see the dark black line where we might have some, at least a portion of all of the trail to be a hard paved surface. I know to take some of the pressure off of the, of the rec trail, but also just to give people more access to the open space and connect it over to the trail that's already improved at Vista Verde. So that black line actually carries along, you know, the east edge of the site, along McCain Road. And then in this graphic shows an opportunity for it to continue out, keeping it, you know, fairly distant from the river proper and then providing other less intensive trails to get out to the river by connecting it over to Vista Verde there. But we also show that, you know, we can continue some hard paved, you know, access along McCain Road down to the, you know, the potential new parking area. And then another connection, as you can see, you know, just south of the, of the solar array, where we can have a hard paved surface for more immediate access to that parking and then on up, you know, along McCain Road as a, as a more multi-use trail. I think with that, we can go to Concept Two and what you'll, what you'll really be able to see if we just go to that next slide. Essentially, essentially the same plan, but we've not, we're not, we're not showing any, any hard paved trail, same alignment out along the river, but no hard paved surfaces except along McCain Road and connecting to Vista Verde. So I'd say at the, at the overall plan, that's probably the most significant change. And I think the feedback we got that is that's a preference. I'll, I'll, a couple of things about how we might design that hard paved trail in either scenario is that traffic calming works for bicycles like it does for cars. So if we, you know, at the rec, we've had a lot of long, very straight alignments, which is great for covering a lot of ground and traveling at higher speeds. I think if we keep any hard paved trails kind of in and along McCain Road, tighter curvature, slow people down, limiting the width of the trail as much as we can and maybe using a combination of surfaces. That always helps calm people down. I've also seen, you know, on the, on the Plant River Trail and at the, and particularly at the Carson Nature Center down in Littleton, South Denver, they put a roundabout in to slow cyclists down because they were, that's the point where people were coming out of the nature center and accessing the trail. And those are really simple things that can be, if you have the room to do them, it takes about a forty-foot circle in the middle to do that. Where if we're having problems of excessive speed or conflicts with pedestrians, you can calm people that way. So there's things we can do. You can even do rumble strips to alert people they're coming across, you know, the cyclists that are coming up to a crossing or to, you know, a slower speed area. So those are things we can look at as the design moves forward. But just look at some of the details. Sam will go through them real quick.
Yeah, we can, we can skip forward. I think it's, it's probably, just keep going and then I will tell you when to stop. Where we can stop right here. So just for some reference, that previous slide that we just skipped over is all of the big hand-placed stone walls that you guys have throughout the city. And that was one of the elements of a few that we've sort of looked at as bringing in whenever possible to McCain. And that's in an effort to try to like holistically unify the space, the open space with an aesthetic that is recognizable with the town. Where, you know, at least from my perspective, someone who doesn't live here, I certainly recognize those walls every time I come into town and I, it's an immediate association in my head, like this is Breckenridge. This is something that is everywhere and it's beautifully done throughout town. So if we can carry that in, in some of the elements throughout the site, we're going to try to do so. And that's what we're seeing with these sort of brown walls that are here on some of the. And that's what we're seeing with these sort of brown walls that are here on some of the berms. This is our first feature area. This is right along Coin Valley and McCain Road. So this is what we're calling the gateway because it kind of serves as the main entrance into the open space. There was a location here where that number four is that we were looking at doing a shade structure slash picnic area. And that's sort of where Duke was referring to what we had heard from BOSAC and even the public when we presented these concepts is that most people have a preference for vegetation for shade rather than a structure. But I wanted to just emphasize that what we're showing here, especially with these two columns or the column on the left or the, yeah, the left, is you have high intensity and then low intensity, that would be concept one, concept two. So really the design is the same in these locations, but how we approach the improvements is what's different. And so that's what changes the intensity of the development. And so on this one, you're seeing the highest intensity, but you can imagine what might happen in these locations if we were to lower that intensity. So like an example would be the shade structure here. You're also seeing on the number five there, these cobblestone barriers that we were referring to. So we're putting these in areas where we recognize there's going to be high traffic, but also in areas where it's proximity to the river, but specifically portions of the river we do not want people having access to. Or at least we want to severely restrict access to, to the best of our ability. And so that is sort of what we're seeing here is just providing an entry area that sort of frames the view into the open space and serves as the main touch point that you would come into. Even if you were, you know, whether you're driving, whether you're coming down the rec path from town or whatever, this is the first thing you're going to see. So really emphasizing that gateway. We can go to the next one. The second feature area is that first portion of the river access that we talked about. What you're seeing on number one there is a viewing platform of some kind with some sort of a blind structure, but in a lower intensity plan, that could just simply be an area where you have a clearing with some benches and some spotting scopes. And it doesn't necessarily need to be a whole structure, but that's something to consider. And then there's some associated areas around here, like the number two, we're showing a nature play feature, a little bird's nest sculpture, which is actually in the precedent board's previous slide. So if you want to see what that looks like, that's in there. And then again, here, some of those areas where we're really close to the water that we want to make sure we provide some sort of a barrier, but nothing physical in terms of a fence. And then this, this is a, this is one of the three main access areas. The, you wouldn't have access to the river in this location specifically, at least how it's proposed on this concept. As we would want to preserve the sort of distance from whatever wildlife viewing we are sort of focusing on so that there is still interest from the wildlife to come down to this end of the property and they maybe don't feel like they're being seen or as disturbed by the activity on site. Because you're higher up and because we would be planting vegetation in front of it, it screens it from them a little bit. So that's kind of the idea here as to why there isn't access to the water. If we go to the next one, this is the center of the open space and on the main concepts, it's kind of right smack dab in the middle above or right below the, the sort of meadow that we were talking about, the wildflower garden. And this would be an opportunity to create some sort of an overlook, whether or not that's actually elevated off the ground or if it's a simply raising the grading and having a platform at the top of that. But the idea here is a three hundred and sixty degree panoramic view of not only McCain, but the surrounding context such as the ten mile range and all of the mountains that you have amazing views of from on McCain's site. And as a part of that, looking at what we could potentially do in terms of a monumental art installation, such as a sculpture or some sort of a rotating piece or whatever that might be and working with local organizations to sort of facilitate how that would work and potentially even doing some sort of a community wide process where we sort of field artists and pick something, someone local to do something that's in tune with what is expected for the art, but in a way to engage the community in that way. And this would just really serve as the best place to go and the most accessible place to go in the open space for you to get the most holistic experience and be able to see everything. And so we would provide access to this in a way that anybody of any ability, whether you're in a wheelchair or with a stroller or by yourself hiking, you can access this. We go to the next one. This is our urban edge is what we call it, but this is right between McCain Road and the sort of big heart of the open space. The idea is this is a transitionary place from the urban condition to the front country open space. So that's why you kind of see heavier sort of more urban forms with these street trees along the road. But then as you transition beyond the berms, it becomes much more organic and loose. And that is to serve as that transition. But also what you're seeing here is we have two berms on either side and then a depression in the middle. So this actually kind of creates another sort of view into the space from Highway Nine from McCain Road. And the overlook structure and art installation is centered on that piece as well. So you would sort of have this view directly towards the overlook. And so you can see directly in to the most predominant portion of the site in terms of experiencing it. And getting those views in is important as we want this to be a landmark sort of destination for the town. So that's why this has a few more urban forms to it and is a little bit more formally planted. One of the cool things we're showing here is our number four, which is just a rock snake. The idea is that this is a discovery play element. This is something that we would put in to resemble a snake using rocks or logs or something. And it would be a structure that kids can play on or explore around. And just playing with fun forms with these organic pieces to create something that maybe doesn't look exactly like a snake, but it's kind of like a snake, you know? But we can go to the next one. This is just a cross section through that, what we were just looking at. So McCain Road being on the left and the meadow being on the right and showing how that would sort of berm and how we could potentially do some rainwater capture off of McCain Road to, to help supplement whatever irrigation needs to be done here for any of the vegetation to take, because we can create some sort of a drainage swale along the road and, and use that water on site if possible. Since we don't have a lot of water on site, we're looking for as many opportunities as we can to capture what we already get. And so that's one thing we were looking at doing. We can go to the next slide. This is our wildflower meadow is a bigger feature area. This is also where the river overtopped last year. So that's actually what you're seeing as number five is the improvement that was made to that and how that channel is. And the idea is that we would have this maybe boardwalk over that that would take you to the other side. And then on that other side, you would have a little bit of a loop trail around the wild, the wildflower garden. And then you would have access to the river off of that sandbar. And then this is another opportunity to have a gathering space. So this could be another shaded picnic grove or, or a structure if it was desired in a certain location. Same thing as what we showed on the first feature area and more of that, of that sort of protection of the river with vegetation burming and those cobblestone barriers. But I really like this. I think it would be cool to have a boardwalk over that. There's an opportunity to educate about the overtopping and all of the stuff that went into that and how it's functioned. And providing that on a boardwalk setting is kind of a cool way to engage the public with that work that was done. Next one, please. Okay, I think if, is there one more or is this the last? That's it. Okay, cool. So I did good. So this is our last feature area along the river with the exception of the one closest to Vista Verde. But this is another opportunity to provide river access. We're just kind of approaching it a little bit differently here, providing some activity space in that big sort of, I don't want to say lawn because it's likely not going to be a lawn, but this open space that is encompassed by the trail. This could be a gathering space, another place where people can gather for picnics or hanging out with the family. Another opportunity to provide some nature play features, discovery play features, which is what my number four is on this diagram, that those are actually just same idea as the snake, but fish made out of rocks or logs or something. You know, creative ways to use those materials to create play features. And then additionally, sort of trailing along off the right hand side of this is a very, very narrow trail. And this is what you saw on the first concept between the last two feature areas. And the idea is we would create a very, very narrow trail and provide access between the areas so that the social trails don't form on their own. And then by doing that, we can kind of control where you're close to the river, where you're not close to the river and what areas of the river to protect it and what areas don't. But just coming up with a way to do that so that there's less inclination from the people using the space to want to create their own trails when they're already being given a path. And that's kind of an idea that we had for doing it in any capacity throughout the open space if we felt like we needed to. So I know we really went through these quickly, but I'm, I'm hoping that I, I gave enough background on, on each of these areas enough that you kind of have a, a feel for what each of these areas are trying to achieve. But holistically, it's just a, you know, it's an effort in stewardship and getting people out to just experience the space is the, the biggest priority. And because it's just such a great space to experience. And that's really where we're at at this point. And we've gotten, as Duke mentioned, very good feedback from BOSAC and from the public with these concepts. So I'm just really interested to hear what you guys have to say.
Great. Thank you very much. Do people have any questions about this beautiful plan? Really, it's like a work of art in and of itself.
I think all of this is wonderful, everything you've been through, BOSAC's comments, I think I echo all of them. The discovery play is fun, the boardwalks are fun. I mean, like Kelly said, there's a lot that's adding to the uniqueness of this space. I'm wondering if anyone from your team has talked to the folks at the BOEC, the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center. They're a group that helps folks of all different abilities experience the outdoors. So they are local partner we look to for that. And we've talked about accessibility, the uniqueness of this space, that it is fairly flat. So I would like to make sure we have some input from that group.
I can answer quickly that we have not connected with them, but I appreciate the suggestion as we look into how to kind of bolster our outreach in phase two, so I'll add them to our list.
Great, thank you.
I also just love the idea of the play being as accessible as possible, even if you're using these natural objects. I mean, with the idea of the whole space being accessible, I think every feature within should also be accessible as a result of that. Or at least providing an opportunity to be accessible in some way. So I appreciate that. We'll definitely reach out to them.
Anything else? Yeah, comments, questions? No? Happy?
Ah, I think it was good.
You want comments?
Yeah, I want to.
I do, I do have a question. What's your concept for winter activities in this space?
So we, we've been asked this a lot, but we don't necessarily have like a set plan with like an exhibit where we've already looked at that. But the idea is that all of these trails, while they are going to be designated out here, we've, we've, we don't see why they couldn't be used for winter activities in the same capacity or even in a completely different capacity. Recognizing the, the proximity to the Nordic Center, there was talk from some of the public at the public engagement meeting that they should try to incorporate Nordic trails into the open space if possible. And I love that idea because I don't see why, there's no reason any of this stuff out here could just get groomed as a Nordic trail and, and facilitate those sort of winter activities. And then there's things we can do creatively with grading and things to do some really fun like activity spaces, maybe even some sort of a sledding opportunity. But we've thought about these things for sure, but certainly snowshoeing and Nordic cross-country skiing is a huge easy thing to incorporate into this as an overall sort of plan. And that's actually something we want to look at providing recommendations for in the management and final report, the management plan and final report. So we will likely have a lot more information about that when we present that final report to you guys as well. But because we have heard it, I, I promise we've heard it and we are thinking about it. But it's just difficult to figure out a way to really show that. But recognize that we, we are looking at that for sure.
I think what I might add is that because we've created kind of a loop opportunity within the park, we actually had some discussing about how your cross-country team could use this for events, especially if we keep it more softer trails, that there's plenty of ways we can. It's about a half a mile loop around the bigger loop if you look on the, on the concept plan. And so it'd be easy to create quarter mile loops, half mile loops and do some things where the cross-country team can have events, can practice there, so.
And we did get to speak with the coach, didn't we? He was at the public engagement meeting, so we got to speak with him directly. So he was happy to hear that there will be opportunity for the cross-country team to utilize the space as well, so.
Great. Did you have a comment?
Just, I, I mean, I support BOSAC, you know, with the less hard materials and keep it as open spaces as possible. You know, avoid the, the ropes and fences. I, I love the berm to, to screen it. I'd like to have that go all the way around the, the, well, maybe not all the way around the perimeter, but certainly on the east side and, and a little bit on the north side where it, you know, butts up against the jut out, you know? But yeah, no, I, great job. Looks great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We think that opportunity to, to, to use the stone motif that you've used so successfully around town is an opportunity to again, have this space begin to have Breckenridge be more identifiable, you know, further toward the north end of town and really be an iconic space. The public art opportunity I think can be a big thing. On the Ridge Gate Master Plan Community, which is in Lone Tree, Colorado, that I've been working on for years, we've done public art engagement processes for several of the public spaces. And this could be an opportunity to create a, a, an iconic and really monumental piece of art that really communicates what this space and what Breckenridge is about. And so when we've done them at, at Ridge Gate, we've had, had competitions per se where we've had artists, you know, make proposals and give them a stipend to, to participate in that process. But give them some guidelines about what you want that piece of art to, to, you know, to do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll want some parameters and not just start it loose.
You don't want some Mickey Mouse ears out on McCain?
Oh, it's, it's good. Did we do, that, that's, that's part of the bike path, the rec path that we groom for Nordic during the winter as well, so.
Seems like it'd be pretty easy to do that.
We discussed using some of these interior trails as an extension of the groomed.
That'd be awesome.
Of an interior loop.
Okay, any final comments? No? I think we must be very happy to not, to not have to. I think BOSAC did a great job, all the feedback that you said they had really, I think, has been council's focus as well. And so as long as you're taking that direction, I think we're all moving in the same direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time, everyone.
What? No, come on. All right. No? All right, we're going to move on to planning commission decisions. They had a pretty in-depth conversation, but I don't think there was any decisions, right? So we'll move on to legislative review, Council Bill Number Twelve, Series Twenty Twenty Five, An Ordinance Amending Town Code to Address Neighborhood Preservation Policy. Second reading.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll have the second reading of the first phase of NPP. So it's just addressing making the setbacks for single family home, changing those to absolute policy, addresses EV charger points and there's one more item.
I can't remember it either.
Landscaping, we're eliminating landscaping points for single family residences. No changes for, since the first reading at your last meeting, but I'm happy if you have questions to answer those.
Before a second reading?
Nope, fixed everything from the first one.
Okay, we're ready. Thanks, Sarah. Council Bill Number Thirteen, Series Twenty Twenty Five, the Twenty Twenty Four I E C C Code Adoption. Is that Rick? Feels better already.
Hello, mail. Hello, Mayor and Council members. Richard Scott Fout, Chief Building Official here with our amazing Deputy Building Official by my side. For showing up today to keep this new energy code adoption moving along, we are getting there. You've heard a lot from me over the course of this process already and we have a whole nother round of building code adoptions coming up after this one. So I'm going to share the fun and the duties of seeing up this first reading to you with my partner in crime, I mean, partner in code. Take it away, partner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Philip Swett, Deputy Building Official. I want to thank you for your time today. On tonight's agenda for your consideration is the first reading for the Twenty Twenty Four International Energy Conservation Code Adoption with Amendments. The ordinance with proposed amendments is included as an attachment with the memo in your packet for your review. Over the last several months, as part of the adoption process, we have held six stakeholder meetings. Key takeaways from these meetings have helped the Building Division, along with our energy code consultant, Shona Mazingo, to develop strategic amendments to the Twenty Twenty Four International Energy Conservation Code that we feel meet the needs of our community, designers and builders. Additionally, to align with our core values of stewardship and innovation, we believe this new code with the proposed amendments will steer the town we believe this new code with the proposed amendments will steer the town of Breckenridge towards our long-range sustainability goals. This code adoption provides alignment with our grant requirements, including the date of adoption proposed for September twenty-third at the second reading we received from the Colorado Energy Office. We request that our new energy code effective date aligns with our remaining international code council family of code adoptions with a proposed effective date of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. These next coded options will be presented to council with work sessions starting in late October, with the second reading ending December ninth. Also with an overall effective date of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. Again, thank you for your time and consideration, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks, Phil. All right, questions? We're ready? You guys really walked us through this, so I think we're feeling pretty confident. Yeah? All right, thank you again for all the public comment, all the incorporation, it's made this very seamless, really appreciate that.
Thank you guys too.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Council Bill Number Fourteen, Series Twenty Twenty Five, An Ordinance Amending Town Code to Address Campaign Finance Complaints in Municipal Elections.
I'll take this one.
Great.
So this came up, this is a new statutory allowance, I guess, that the state legislature put forward in twenty twenty-four. It requires that the town, if we do not want to have to process campaign finance complaints, that we have to pass an ordinance referring those complaints to the Secretary of State of Colorado. That is what we would like to do, because we don't really have the infrastructure, the staff, the resources to handle campaign finance complaints. So what you have before you for first reading tonight is an ordinance that will refer campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State. We didn't do this last year mostly because there's a timing component to it, and it does need to be done six months in advance of the election, so that's why we're doing it now.
Great, thanks, Keely.
Yeah.
Questions?
Do we have to approve an ordinance like this before each election, or are we doing this one?
No, just once, yep, and then we're done. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you, Keely. All right, we'll move into the manager's report, public projects update. For those who haven't talked about public projects enough today. We'll just have anyone. Well, are there any questions? No, she did such a great job.
Must have figured she'd already laid it all.
Like, I don't, I don't need to, they've done a great job. Thank you, Kristen, for being, well, for being willing to come down with us. Mobility, Matt?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I don't really have anything to add to the mobility report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
Matt, did we remove a hub to move one to ski and racket, or was that, did we just spread out bikes a little bit more?
Uh, yeah, I think we had an extra hub that we were able to move, split apart and move them up there.
Great.
Anything else?
Matt, any insights as to the decrease in use of the trolley and the number of rides on the trolley?
Really, I don't, I think it's a little too early to make any decisions on why it's going down. I think it's, uh, while they are, they do look like pretty big numbers, I don't think it's anything that's really trending downwards at this point, so no.
I'd hope you would say that because we're parking more cars in the South Gondola lot and maybe that people are walking more, I don't know.
It, it could be, but I don't think I have a definitive answer on that.
Additional question? No, I don't think I did. I'm okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Matt. Sustainability? Oh, do you, oh, Teddy's gonna come, great.
Okay, nothing to add to the memo, but the one thing Jesse wanted me to check in with the council on is regarding the EPA endangerment finding and if council was interested in signing in, signing on to the CC four C A letter opposing the rollback of the endangerment finding.
Yeah, we talked about this a little bit too, is that we don't really need to sign this as a council, right? So we could, I mean, I'm very interested in signing on to this, but people could sign on on their own.
Yep, I think you can individually sign on, that's fine. We talked a bit about, like, should we pass a resolution? But I don't feel like that's particularly meaningful and it's not something we normally do. And then the other thing we talked about was trying to do an op-ed in the paper to help our community understand the importance. But again, I don't know that we'll get a lot of bang for our buck by doing that. So probably council members, if you feel comfortable signing on to the letter, is the best way to go.
I would love, and we can make sure that this is not just my opinion, but the Board of County Commissioners were still talking about doing an op-ed today when they had their meeting. So I guess I'd just be curious if we could have our sustainability folks reach out to whoever's gonna do that up there and just find out what they're doing. Because if it is like writing a piece about here are all the things we're doing and this, this is how it could impact the town and the county, it might be an interesting thing to help out with, but I don't really know what they're picturing. Is that okay with people if sustainability reaches out to the county and says?
Absolutely.
Copy that, yep.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, it looks like we don't have any housing minutes, but Lori, do you have any update? Okay, any questions for Lori since she's here? Nope, all right, thank you. I love your black sheep sweater. No open space, committee reports, there was, I think, Equity and the Stage in there.
I'd just say on the stage, I think it's great that they decided to add a board seat for a Spanish-language rough. So kudos to the stage for adding that seat.
That's great. Anything else? All right, events, John?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, in front of you, you have the memo and minutes. I also understand that Tamara from Rec Create sent an additional email today outlining kind of their strategy and some background on popular music. Any questions?
Questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, John. Okay, we're ready for the, well, maybe we should go ahead and take a break since we're now five minutes ahead, so we'll take a break. Oh, no, we're even more than that. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll get into runway conveyance.
Go.
I don't understand, something's, like, we said incorrectly maybe, like here, so it's like all of this. Essentially, she said, hearing commentary in the community that is inconsistent with reality. It scrolled down, I have no idea, like, it just felt odd, I don't know what was. Do you have any insight on what was?
I don't know, but yeah.
Good planning. I think she, I read it quickly, I think she just wanted to provide a little more. Quality things to me a lot, like, to make the efforts through things like that.
For joining us, Darcy and Lori, I think we're ready for runway conveyance.
So I'm just gonna kick this one off before Lori gets started. I know you all had a confidential document shared with you that is essentially the same budget document that you saw last, last meeting. And the reason that that is still confidential is that the developer continues to work on the budget numbers and so that will stay confidential for, for a bit here. But I know we've had a lot of conversations around what can we do to bring the costs down? You know, what kind of things our staff, our staff looking at and how are we working with the developer? We've had our, our TAIC in to talk to you and they've done that high level overview of the budget, the vertical budget that we have to date. I had a conversation with them last week after, you know, talking with Todd some more and having some additional conversations with both Chris and John Bills. And they have provided me with an additional proposal that would add scope to what the work they're doing with us already. And that additional scope would allow them to do the time to do a deeper dive into those numbers. So they could, you know, they would do weekly calls with us, they would look at cost estimates. They would look at costs to make sure that they're reasonable, similar to what they did with the high level numbers, but at a more detailed level. And then also review constructability, value engineering, ongoing maintenance, kind of look at all the things that I think you want us looking at to try to make this project affordable to the town and to bring that cost down as best we can. So I wanted to share that with you. We can still go into executive session after Lori's done with her presentation to you, but I thought if you had this information ahead of time, it might inform your decision on whether or not you feel like we need an exec session. And I hope it also goes to a little bit into explaining why those numbers haven't changed. We, it's very early on in developing the numbers and it will be very helpful for us to have our TAIC working with our staff and with Suzanne so that as this moves forward, we can bring you additional, we'll have documents and spreadsheets for you that do likely show change. So, do you have any questions on that?
How much additional would it be for them to do this?
So their original proposal was $5,000. This proposal brings it to $30,000, which is still, I think, for the, you know, essentially owner's rep type work that they're doing is a pretty affordable number. And it is hourly, so it's an up to number, it's not, you know, we're not handing them a check for 30 grand.
I mean, I think for what, are we supposed to talk about this?
We can talk about the TAIC case, we just don't wanna talk about the budget numbers.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think for what they're doing and the point is that they're reviewing the numbers, that they will either earn that much money or just give us that peace of mind, that much peace of mind, so.
And with the expanded scope, do you feel they still have that background and expertise?
I do.
Great.
Any questions, any more additional questions? No? All right, Lori.
Yeah, I think we're looking forward to working with our TAIC and we hadn't had a chance to let Suzanne know that we were bringing them on. So I think Suzanne and our TAIC worked really well under our first exercise, so we hope that'll continue. I mean, I mean, we're gonna continue throughout this process to look at ways to reduce the cost to the town. So we're all committed to that and if they can help us do it, that's fantastic.
I think as you know, you know, we have a staff member who's out on leave through the end of the year. So having someone else available to do this work for us will ensure that we actually are doing our due diligence since we don't necessarily have the staff to take that on.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. So my memo, I think, provides you with the information you, you need in terms of what we're doing today. Basically asking for preliminary approval of the budget, it has not changed. And authorization to transfer the property to the developer. This was all contemplated in our developer agreement that we signed back in July. And it will enable Suzanne to get serious with some of the lenders and some of the subs in terms of getting pricing and continually trying to reduce the cost of any sort of interest rates and those sorts of things with our lenders. So we are basically just looking for your authorization and I don't have anything really to add other than what's in the memo. And as Shannon noted, if you want to review the budget again, we can definitely go into executive if that's your preference, but it definitely hasn't changed and we're ready to convey the property. It won't happen immediately today. I think it'll take us maybe 10 days a week, two weeks or so to actually draft up the deed and work with land title to actually execute the conveyance.
And the conveyance is separate from the pricing discussion, right?
Right, the pricing discussion, your, your ability to, you know, approve the final vertical pricing. I mean, that's scheduled for January and even though the land is conveyed, there's really nothing that can, no construction, no vertical construction that can occur until you approve the vertical pricing in January.
And that matches what you said, I think, the last time you sat there. So thank you for clarifying that again, just to make sure, I appreciate it.
So we have, you know, we have two options. If you all know, there's no need to discuss the budget again in exec. We can move on with getting your feedback on the conveyance. And then we will still have an exec session because we have another matter to discuss. If you feel like you want to go into exec, we can talk about the budget, we'll do the other matter and then we would come out and get your feedback on the conveyance. So it, we can do it either way, it's up to you.
I have one question that's, that'd need to be in exec session. Like, I might have misheard you this morning, but with the deed, the deed restrictions, do they need to be done before the conveyance or what's timing of the deed restriction?
Yeah, there'll be one master deed restriction and we've been working with Keely on the terms of the deed restriction. We also went to BSAC after we had had initial conversation with you guys about the terms of the deed restriction. We got BSAC's input on all those elements, ownership of other land, income testing, the elements that we had talked with you all about before. So that's what we're drafting, the deed restriction is based on the feedback that we got from you originally and then from BSAC. And yes, it would need to be recorded prior to the actual conveyance.
Will, will the council get a chance to, to see the deed restriction prior to the actual conveyance?
We can certainly bring it back to you at the second meeting in September. And I, it'll match what, the direction that we received previously, but.
Okay, I just, I, you know, there's just so many parts to it. I think it's important that this group have one more look at that before we actually convey the land.
We can be all prepped and teed up for the conveyance and have it immediately following your approval of the deed restriction.
That'd be awesome, thanks Lori.
Good point.
What's that?
Good to see.
Yeah, we might change your mind.
Alright, so. That wouldn't happen. So do we need to go into an executive session for anything on the budget?
Maybe prudent to if.
Let's do it.
Can I get a motion under 2464024A and E to discuss real property owned by the town? The runway project and to discuss negotiations related to the development of vertical construction on the property. Actually, I think since we'll be discussing the other matter too, I need to do that citation as well. So same A and E, same subsections, but to also discuss open space negotiations regarding a parcel located in Park County.
Second.
Sorry. Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We are going to go into executive session and we will come out for any decisions. All right, we are now going to come out of exec, or we already came out of executive session. So we are going to finish up our conversation about the.
Um, Keely, do we need to?
Neighborhood conveyance?
The open space, like say the decision on the open space piece and then?
It was, yeah, just, you, you wanna just say?
You instructed.
Yeah, you instructed the negotiators.
The negotiators.
Yeah. Regarding the open space purchase.
Regarding the open space purchase.
Great. And just to put some context for the runway conveyance. So the developer agreement does require that the council give preliminary approval of the general budget for the vertical construction prior to conveyance of the parcel. So that's the question before you now. You are welcome to chat about it, ask any questions of staff. We've talked about it beforehand, had a brief discussion of the numbers in executive session and now you guys can take it away.
Great, thanks. Okay, so let's wrap up with any questions about the conveyance. Jay?
Lori, are there any specific milestone triggers that, or deliverables that are tied to the January vertical construction approval? Like, is there anything that has to be met?
I don't believe any milestones with you all. I mean, we will be meeting with our TAIC weekly on sort of working to finalize the budget before January. And so that's our plan and I think Suzanne's looking forward to working with them and confident we're gonna be able to find some savings. I don't know how much, but there's no real milestones with you all, or check-ins.
And if we see the horizontal going over the GMP, will that get? Will we, is that something that will be handled administratively or will that come back to council?
Well, yeah, we, we have a GMP that we cannot approve pricing over the GMP. So, you know, Shannon's monitoring the invoices as we go along and we'll be checking those relative to budget and we don't have the option of being over the GMP.
So I think there're just two, to clarify this, two things, right? The horizontal is a GMP, the vertical will be a vertical budget number that you approve. And if there's, if the developer is gonna go over that number, then we have to come back to you and talk about that.
Okay, are there questions? I had a question as we just moved forward, I guess. I wanted to circle back to the public comment that we received about just sort of being able to get across the site in order to access the river and just being able to, and also having adequate signage and making sure that traffic and, you know, that we're handling or that we're making sure that as the developer starts developing, that that area is still good place for the people who are living around it. I just wanna know, are we just sort of in discussions with the developer? Are we posting signs? What, what are we doing or what have we done?
Yeah, and we were talking about that. I mean, the property has been entirely fenced now. So the actual construction site is fenced and it will, there'll be additional signs advising people not to come into the construction site that's fenced off. We do have a plan that we've worked with Public Works on in terms of the balance of the property. And I don't have that with me, but it provides for some storage and materials that Public Works is still using primarily down on the south end of the property. I don't know, I'd have to look at that map to see if there's still any public parking. I don't believe there is in terms of access to, to the river. But I think in terms, are you talking access, walking along the river?
Well, I just think, I think hopefully the neighbors by this time have figured out that they can go north or south to get around to the river.
There's the trail, yeah.
And that we're not changing that access anymore than it currently has been, so.
Right.
All right, I, I just wanna make sure that we're as good a neighbors as we can be. Everybody knows that being up against a construction site, and it will be years long construction site can be a trial, so just whatever we can do to ease that pain.
Okay, okay.
We're also working on a communication outreach plan for the skier parking so that people are well aware of the fact that that's moving to McCain.
Great.
Which Matt has been referring to as the peak six law. We don't know if that's gonna gain traction or not, but.
Interesting.
Peak six.
Peak six law.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the land conveyance? All right, we ready to move forward with that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you can take a straw poll if you want.
Purple, yeah.
Yeah, and as we talked about earlier, we'll get to see that deed restriction before.
Yes. Yep.
Get that in the record.
Yeah.
All right.
Go by person, just to make sure we've got everybody's affirmative or nay.
Nay or nay?
Yay.
Yay.
I'm a yes.
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 I'm also a yes.
Awesome, thank you. Have a few minutes if you'd like to do a little report out, great, people up for it?
Do you wanna kick us off?
Sure. So if you haven't seen Peyton, we'll, I'm sure be sending something out to remind you that CAST, well, let me go in order, that Mountain Town's 2030 is October 7th and 8th. And so if folks are intending, it's here in breath and we'll make sure to get folks registered. And then as they have for the last few years, CAST is piggybacking on Mountain Town. So on Wednesday, the 8th, they're gonna have a reception in the evening and then they'll do a half day meeting on the 9th in Keystone. And since it's so close, whoever wants to attend is welcome to attend. So please let Peyton know and she'll get you set up for that as well. I'm gonna turn this over to Keely in just a second, but before I do that, Julia, I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that we'll be doing an email blast out to folks that still have non-conforming lighting. We are, they've developed the outreach, it's going through our communications folks to sort of, as much as we can soften the message, make it, I don't know if we can make it fun, but we're gonna try to soften the message. But that'll go out on Monday, so if you hear, you might hear from folks. So we wanted you to have an awareness of that. And we've talked about doing some training for council and SIRSa has some free online training. So I'm just gonna ask Keely to talk a little bit about that and then what we maybe have, or are planning for in person.
We were thinking this fall that we would do some additional SIRSa training. So basically just sort of liability and general council issues. And SIRSa has some, they're really short, it's just some little videos about council issues and council matters that I'm gonna send to you. And I would love it if you guys watch them. Let me know if there was anything that triggered more questions or anything that you'd like additional information on. And I think our goal is to have some, is to have Sam Light from SIRSa come and, and talk about those additional issues that you guys want more information on. So that's sort of the plan. Do you have any questions, concerns? You mad at me for giving you videos to watch? They're very short, so, but they cover some good topics.
Sounds good. I think Peyton reminded Julia to remind me to bring up one other thing. The COO breakfast is on October 3rd in Keystone. We do have a table, if any of you are interested in going, please let Peyton know. You're obviously more than welcome to go. We always have staff who are interested, so if we don't fill the table with council members, then we'll fill it with staff.
Keystone?
Yep.
Okay, great. Report of the mayor and council members, I'll start with MMC. We had a really great update. Trixie Vander Schaaf from Common Spirit was there. She gave an update on nursing and health.
The community health assessment?
Community health assessment. I mean, there's nothing for us to do about that, but I guess she just was kind of keeping everyone in the loop and, you know, wonderful to have like a longtime local who's from the Wellington neighborhood in the driver's seat there. I think that's really beneficial for our community and to just stay in touch with, you know, community needs. So that was great.
Like rates of certain diseases, what do you mean by community health assessment? It was more, it was a, it was a lot of mental, it's like a community survey that they did and it, the things that are impacting our community are everything that you, it's mental health, it's access to care, I think food insecurity was on there, it's, there was substance.
Everything that you, yeah.
Yep, everything that we already know is problematic.
Okay. Trending the same. Then Ellen Reed came from the Summit Foundation and talked about Project Thrive or the after-school programming. And I just think it's really important that we are all aware of what the Summit Foundation accomplished with their after-school programming is that, I think they had, they said between like 40 and 90 kids, depending on just really the need of, you know, Mondays, maybe nobody needs any, or Fridays, nobody needs anybody. So there's 40 kids in care, but anyway, there was no one on the waitlist last year, which is like incredible. After talking about all of our waitlists, but also because it's really only two years into that program. So that is pretty incredible. They're doing, they did give John and the rec center crew props on that that model is just so successful. Then they also have done a lot of working with partners like Mountain Top and Silverthorn. They, you know, Silco's been a huge partner. And so just there, they seem to be setting up a model that really works, and now they're looking for long-term funding, so. The Skieria gave
under, they took, basically reallocated 250K from the medallions to this, for this purpose.
This purpose, and so that
Fair share?
From the medallion sales.
Yep.
And so they'd been like two or three, three years, right?
This will, we're going on.
This will be the third year. But but they need a long-term funding source, so they're in discussions about what that.
Maybe Skieria will give us a few more medallions to do that.
What the long term is, we can ask.
They have been very generous with the medallions.
But I thought that was incredible and deserved to be discussed. And then the school district just keeps reporting out that they're continuing to really look at the alternative pathways. They, you know, they didn't get the the mill levy, but they know that kids need different ways to learn, hands-on ways to learn. They want to come out of high school and go into tech programs, and they need skills from school that are allowing for that. And then obviously, they have lots of other things they're talking about, and if you, they had a very interesting board meeting last week, if you want to listen to the meeting minutes, but a lot going on with the school district, and I think it's exciting to watch. Hopefully it'll, hopefully they'll get some traction and.
Mostly positives.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just think they're, you know, everything's on the table. They're really trying to think outside the box and with a small budget and just trying to do what they can.
Good to hear.
Yeah, it was great to hear. Did you want to add anything to that?
Um, the only other thing, I think probably everyone knows that the county is going to the ballot with a question to use some of the lodging tax that would normally be allocated to childcare because they have 5A, or excuse me, they have Strong Future for childcare, they want to ask the voters if they can use that portion of the lodging tax for infrastructure, so for essentially for roads. So that was one thing. It's probably the only other thing that I had to know on.
Great. All right, moving on to open space.
Meeting on Monday.
Tourism office?
Yeah. Let's see, the tourism office is a hundred thousand behind budget, and that's made up of, uh, I think they they were a sponsor of Spark to the tune of about 40,000, and they, I I think paid for the arts survey for 10,000. So that's 50, the other 50 was is lost on Oktoberfest due to losing the primary sponsor. The upside is we've got Pollenar coming back. They're just going to do cans this year. But the the things are looking pretty good to get them back. So and opening the door this year and having them there for cans is awesome, because they were a great sponsor and a great partner, so. So that's positive, that's good. Handlebar, PR vendor, got great hits on Spark. They will, uh, so that that was really good. Park City Leadership is coming, May of 2026. So, you know, we we look forward to connecting, I think BTO is looking forward to connecting, and obviously I think this group leadership of the town, of the towns. That that's always been for those that have been to that in the past, it's it's awesome. I mean, they're just, there's a lot of great sharing going on between those, our our two communities. Boulder got a tourist tourist improvement district is how they funded Sundance, just FYI, which I thought was interesting. I think everybody's really excited about the regional impacts of Sundance coming to Boulder, so that's a real positive for the state. Tessa's going to hire a group services position to work, work with our groups just to try to give a little more service and a little more love to the groups and in hopes of bolstering that business a bit. They're finalizing the resident sentiment survey update. They're going to, they're going to try to get that out here fairly quickly. BTO has been engaged with with Breck Skieria on PR and events. There may be an opportunity for for us to help with some event stuff with the Skieria and collaboration with the Skieria. Skieria has really made it known that they really want to make that connection between the town and the Skierias is part of the brand of Breckenridge Skieria. And that's, that's a real positive, because that that really is what differentiates us from many of the other Skierias. We're one of the few that really has an authentic mining town that you can see too, you know, so. Hopefully, if they come and and we may be able to find a little bit of funding to partner with them on on some stuff, I would certainly be supportive of that, and I think the community and the business community would as well. Tim Wolf, who's the Chair of CTO Colorado Tourism Organization, is coming in November to talk about 150, 250, and how Breckenridge can be a part of the statewide celebration and opportunities there. I'm actually going to meet with him and Lucy and someone from Beaver Run. So, you know, we're going to get together and just talk about opportunities, which is also very exciting, I think, for us and for the state. Merchant Pass is going to continue again this year. Uh, I think it's I think last year's details are still on onebreck.com, so I mean, the details will be similar to that. That's still up, so. So there's the overview of the meeting.
Thank you. Breck History?
Yes, we meet tomorrow. Couple quick little updates. There are the Lorium stabilization process up there, so the structures adjacent to the lovely new parking that's going in. They actually were able to get all three structures stabilized for the budget of the one, so outhouse and the blacksmith shop, which is amazing. And then there's a meeting in October to work on making the train permanent here in Breckenridge, so stay tuned on that.
Great.
The, uh, that stabilization is killer. They've done a fabulous job. I wander up there fairly often and it looks really good.
Yeah, thrilled to have Ty working hand in hand with Breck History, he's doing great work for us.
Great, Steve, Breck Creative Arts?
Everybody got the email, it was kind of summarizing the end of the year and why the air stage camp continue to present during the remaining farmers markets. We have a meeting at the end of the month. They're kind of at the wrap-up stage where they're moving from one year's worth of work into the next year's work.
Hey, thanks. Equity?
I think I already reported out in minutes we're in our packet. I will note that up till Friday, we have applications open, so if anyone has a good candidate in mind, encourage them to apply.
And the Arts and Cultural Series Committee?
I think we're going to see the results presented to us in two weeks or in four weeks.
Next week. Next meeting, I think.
Next meeting, so in two weeks, so.
Great.
Stay tuned.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn from the work session? Great, meeting adjourned. Let's go get food, sister.
I do.
Okay, everyone ready? Were you ready, May? All right, now, the time is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, September 9th, to order. Roll call, please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade. Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. All right, we'll start with approval of the minutes. Town Council minutes, August 26, 2025. Anyone have any changes? Minutes stand, approval of the agenda. Any changes, Shannon?
No changes, Mayor.
The agenda is stands, communications to council. Now is the time for public comment. These are non-agenda items only. Please keep it to a three-minute time limit, please. Don't forget to state your name for the record.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Jess Hoover, and I am here as a citizen of Greater Breckenridge. So I drive on Highway 9 back and forth every day to work, and I just wanted to bring your attention to the intersection of County Road 450 and Highway 9, that's the corner where 7-Eleven is. I understand the town of Breckenridge may not control the traffic lights there. It is a dangerous intersection. I was driving home one evening from work this summer, and a friend of mine was bringing his three-year-old home from preschool at Little Red, and they were on bikes and they were crossing, and it was the white, white pedestrian sign was on, it was safe for them to cross. But a lot of cars make that right-hand turn on red, and a car turned right on red into them as Tom and his little three-year-old son were on their bikes in the intersection. You can imagine dad got upset and angry and yelled at the car, and it was really scary to watch, and so I don't know what can it's not the first time I have also witnessed a vehicle pedestrian issue there. So I don't know what can be done. I don't know if we could have all red at a time while pedestrians cross safely, but you know, it's a popular intersection, it goes to the ballpark, it goes to the rec center, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, very much. We will continue to work with staff, they're here and have heard your comments, and definitely as we continue to move forward with even more programming at that intersection, we will be aware that, you know, we need to do the best we can for especially pedestrians, but everybody using that. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We are going to have Lucy for the Breckenridge Tourism Office update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start with lodging and get that out of the way. Our summer room nights were pretty consistent. We're still running 14% down, and that's room nights, that's part of tourism, that is not tourism for the purpose of sound bites. ADR has been up most months, but again, that's a function of booking larger rooms. I think our lodges have been really competitive with rate, so I don't think rate is our problem. In within that, the shortfall, when we look at revenue, we can measure revenue by state, we're still running a little more than 50% of the revenue shortfall associated with those room nights is Colorado. So, and then about another quarter of that is Texas, so those are the two big chunks of revenue loss for lodging. Looking forward to winter, we're down 6% in room nights, not tourism. Revenue is actually up 1% for the winter, again, small numbers, so that's a function of ADR. So we've been running pretty consistent. We are changing our media plan just to test some things. I don't expect it will impact lodging one way or the other this late in the game, but we will be able to see in the marketing metrics if it makes any difference or not. So anyway, so that that's where we sit today. We are looking forward for at least Oktoberfest. Lodging is a little bit better for the, from the Thursday through the Sunday over last year and over two years ago, so that's a little bit of a bright spot. We have been getting a lot of feedback from other events that events have been a little bit off this summer, and some festivals have even canceled, so we're you know, optimistic, very optimistic about Oktoberfest just based on the lodging. Eagle Rock will be, the distributor will be in here with Breckenridge Brewery again, and they're bringing six other breweries with them. Pollenar will be here Saturday and Sunday with six of their products that will be canned products only from Pollenar. A few changes that you may want to be aware of. We will have, you know, wristbands for people that are 21 and over, that's not new, but this will be pay with credit card only, so the wristbands won't be preloaded like they were last year. That's pretty much a cost savings thing, just because we lost a sponsor. We're moving the kids zone down to the South Main, so that should help animate that part of town. We have all the usual things, seven bands, the usual vendors. Brewmaster Dinner is back this year, that's going to be at Beaver Run, that's going to be Thursday. And the keg tap is Friday at 2:00, so thank you, Kelly, for doing that. I presume you're doing that?
I am.
Thank you. So that's what we've got. We're excited about it and ready to get going. You can't move in our office for the boxes, so sooner the better. And your steins, we have the steins in the back, so. Just looking forward a little further for snow sculpture, we're really excited about the collection of teams we have this year. It's absolutely a stellar artistic collection, 10 international teams, and Breckenridge and Vermont will be the only two domestic teams. I would love to tell you who they are, but we have so many great media possibilities with this grouping. We're packaging that up to get that in a release, and I'm sure we will have a great deal of media coverage on this one, so we're really happy about that. And we have moved the event back a week to get it farther away from MLK Weekend, which was just the load-in, so we'll be going January 24th to Feb. 3 this year. So speaking of media, Handlebar and Lauren Swanson again have just really been incredible this summer. We're getting a lot of pickup on the Breck Leaf Brief, which is the fall foliage stuff. We started that last year, and even for the second time around, we're getting some pretty good coverage that just went out. And we are adding trails in addition to Aspen Alley. There was some discussion about whether we should not include it at all, but we're including everything else that's great to look at as well. So the leaf brief, the fall foliage stuff is going well. Spark, we did really well, had a little over 40 hits, media hits on Spark. Oh, I wanted to thank Ella Gardner too for the leaf brief. She's been incredible helping us with that. On dark skies, thank you, Julia, for getting thrown into interviews fast and furious. We've had a ton of them, travel and leisure, CBS, CPR. And Julie has been doing them all, so that's been great. Two last things for you. We have been doing these Meeting of the Minds meetings where we've invited businesses to come in and just sort of have an informal roundtable about what they're seeing in business and get their perspectives from the street, and we've done four of these. They've all been a little bit different, but the common themes to all four were, everybody talked about events. Should we have more? Should we have different ones or whatever? So events was a topic. Everybody agrees we're down from Texas, they're seeing that in a lot of different ways. And then a lot of discussion around late night being down. And so that was, that was kind of consistent across all of our groups. So we're taking that information and baking that in with all of our qualitative data to, you know, try to understand what the dynamics are this summer. Resident sentiment is on deck. We had our last advisory committee meeting yesterday, and we're about 98% final on the survey. It's mostly consistent with the prior four surveys that we've done, going all the way back to 2017. We did add asking about what residents economic outlook is, so that we understand what it is in Breckenridge versus what we're seeing nationally. We are adding some concepts that came out of the Arts and Culture Survey, notably Julia brought forward, people we we want to ask how they prefer to connect in the community. Is it through media? It's not communications, emails and things like that, we know that. But are there other ways they want to connect to feel part of the community? So I think that's a really good one, and we had And we had a number of questions submitted on restaurant delivery service. So we will be refining that question to make sure we frame it in a way so that we get information that'll be useful for the decisions that you need to make on that. So that's what we have. Questions, comments?
Thank you. Questions?
I just had one clarification. Sorry, I misheard it. So you said two groups where we're down, Texas and what was the other one?
Colorado.
Thank you.
Half, half of the revenues are Colorado, so.
Thank you.
That's big.
Yep.
Anything else? Great information. Thank you, Lucy. Okay, so we are going to move on to continued business. Second reading of Council Bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-five. A bill for an ordinance amending policies nine A and nine R, placement of structures, twenty-two R landscaping, and thirty-three R energy conservation of the development code.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Kulik, Assistant Community Development Director, for the record. For your consideration tonight, at second reading is a bill that addresses our neighborhood preservation policies, as they're commonly known. And as noted, they affect policies nine R, twenty-two R, and thirty-three R of the development code. There are no changes from first reading tonight, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Chris, just for the benefit of those listening, can you just really briefly talk about the outreach that you did for us to get here tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. We kind of had a we had a multi-pronged public outreach process. We began with the council to kind of frame what the, what the general concerns were of development trends, particularly with large lots, single-family homes that are on lots that do not have disturbance or building envelopes. And with that, we brought those broader concerns to a special group of architects and developers in the town. We invited forty individuals. Twenty-two of those attended an in-person meeting to kind of review the initial recommendations and also provide more detailed comment. The next step was taking the the broader recommendations to the planning commission for a work session and more comment. And then finally, our third component of public outreach was hosting two open houses for the general public, the second of which was a notice to every individual that would that owned property and wanted in neighborhoods or did not or owned a single-family or duplex lot in the neighborhoods that do not feature building or disturbance envelopes. And then based on that feedback, we brought it back to the council for one final work session to kind of get the the final comments before we brought this issue to a first reading at the last council meeting.
Great. Thank you, Chris, for that. Thanks for being so thorough with the public.
One other comment to remind the public, this is phase one of working with the development code. The second phase will implement positive point opportunities for builders achieving sustainability goals and initiatives.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking for some of the, since we did take away some of the more common low-hanging, if you will, positive points with EV chargers and landscaping. The the group that we're forming will look at new positive point opportunities that we need, that we would like to incentivize within the community, as well as potential building height or bulk plan regulations. So we're hoping to get that group going in the next week or so, and then back later this fall for a work session with the council.
Comment, I wanted to thank you for all your hard work. I mean, just an incredible job all the way around and super thorough and detailed and thoughtful, and I feel like you, you looked at like kind of all sides of it to kind of assess it and just appreciated. There was, I think, a meeting where you you shared like all these pictures of houses throughout a couple of these neighborhoods to kind of just do a deep dive, and I think you did a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Thank you, and I should acknowledge, you know, Sarah was up front during the work session, but she really was an equal partner in all the work at the staff level associated with this, this bill tonight.
Yeah, great review.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public on Council Bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Rankin.
Oh.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving into new business, first reading of Council Bills. Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance repealing ordinances twenty twenty twelve, twenty twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty twenty-three, twenty-one, and amending chapter one of Title Eight of the Breckenridge Town Code to here and after adopt the International Energy Conservation Code, twenty twenty-four edition, by referencing with amendments as part of the Town of Breckenridge Building Code, sections eight, one, three, and eight, one, nine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rick Fout, Chief Building Official, Town of Breckenridge Building Division. We're here for the first reading of the twenty twenty-four International Energy Conservation Code adoption, with local amendments included. This ordinance with those proposed amendments has been incorporated as an attachment to our memos in your packets for review over the last couple of weeks. We believe this new international energy code with our proposed amendments, developed in several roundtables with building community slash stakeholder involvement, will steer the Town of Breckenridge toward our long-range sustainability goals by making our buildings better and more energy efficient. The Breck Building Division thanks you for your time and consideration, and I am happy to field any remaining questions or comments at this time.
Thanks, Rick. Any questions? I would like to know, is, is everyone moving forward with this? Like in the next couple of weeks? Do you know the timing on the countywide movement?
Yeah, Breckenridge is adopting it a little bit early due to the grant we received and its requirements. The Town of Frisco and the County of Summit have been coming to our roundtables, and I've been talking to them in between those times as well, keeping them fully aware of everything that Breck is planning to do. And yes, they are very much in sync and in cooperation, and we'll have a very similar effective date, as we will, since we're putting it off until all of the other codes become effective in January. That's going to be nice, because that's when Frisco and Summit County are adopting and making effective the energy code that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Are the other municipalities looking at the square footage restrictions and extra requirements based on square footage?
Yeah, you know, Todd, like I kind of explained, is that those are in the base code. The threshold is at five thousand square feet, and Breckenridge has elected to just lower that by five hundred square feet, just to make it a little bit more stringent, or I should say capture just a few more of the larger homes below five and above forty-five hundred. But yeah, yeah, Frisco and Summit County will be having similar square foot thresholds where additional energy efficiencies are required, and that's just per the twenty twenty-four IECC and the tables and requirements within it. What you probably a little focused on is that Breck lowered to five thousand to forty-five hundred square feet. It's to match our fire department's proposed new threshold for sprinklers, just to have maybe one less number to work with, since it's only a five hundred square foot difference. And also, just like I say, just capture a few more of those larger square foot homes that we build a lot of, and we want them to have to adhere to some additional energy efficiency requirements.
And that garage space is counted in the conditioned living space?
The term living space is substituted for conditioned space. That way, we capture the garages and the mechanical rooms and some of these other spaces. Hey, if you have to heat it and you have to cool it, it should be subject to our energy codes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rick, as with the last bill, this is a first step part of a process, which is bigger, looking at all the building codes and updating them.
Correct, correct. Yeah, Frisco and Summit County have the luxury of just adopting all of them, including the energy code in and around January. We received this grant, which was a lovely thing. It funded a lot of our outreach and a lot of training that's upcoming now to get people up to speed on the new code and the new technologies. So, yeah, we are, like Breck is, just kind of forging the path, going first, leading the way. A few months earlier, but only with adoption, we're making our effective date similar to our other code adoptions and similar to the other jurisdictions in the areas, code adoptions, including their energy code adoption.
All right, any other questions? All right, any comments from the public on Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
Ask Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
No.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Phil and Rick. Moving on to Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending chapter twelve of Title One of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning campaign finance complaints in municipal elections.
I'll take that one. Good evening, Council. This, this bill is to allow the town to refer campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State of Colorado per state law that was passed in twenty twenty-four. It's a pretty simple process. Someone, if they submit a complaint to us and it meets the parameters, then we can refer it to the Secretary of State, and we will cooperate in any investigation of any campaign finance complaints, but we don't actually have the resources or expertise or staff to handle those ourselves, so. Under state law, we are before you as the ordinance that will allow us to refer those to the Secretary of State.
Great. Any questions for Kelly? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, we have no resolutions tonight. Planning Commission decisions. Stamp. We've already done the report of town manager. Anything done?
Nothing done.
Okay, and we've also done mayor and council member reports, so any other matters? All right, I have one. I would love for everyone or anyone to join me at two o'clock for the keg tapping. I think it'd be really fun if it was like council, a few people from council. Nobody cares about me. It'd be fun if it was like the whole council or anybody who wants to come. I'd love it. Just meet at the Riverwalk Center or Riverwalk in the center of town. And then also. Blue River Plaza. Thanks. Are the fire restrictions, I think I just wanted to mention that people can be watching for us to be rolling them back over the next few days.
Yeah, so actually, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because we, I don't think, sent anything out to council letting them know that fire restrictions have been lifted effective Sunday the day. So May has prepared a proclamation for the mayor to sign. Little bit different from normal, because we're not waiting till, you know, midnight on Thursday to to reduce those restrictions, but everybody feels comfortable now that with the rain and current conditions that we're okay.
And the discussion was that, you know, we're really not okay until there's a foot of snow on the ground, so we can definitely, we could definitely go back into restriction, so. Just so you're aware. Okay. Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
I'll be in Denver for CMO. I won't make it.